All right, everybody. It's very cool to see so many people here tonight. It's gonna be a fun night. Do I have a motion to return to open session? Ms. Bond and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session? That to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, or discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Gitchry and Ms. Bond, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion for no further discipline for student A?
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Abstain, I wasn't present.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor, one abstain.
Motion carries. And do I have a motion for no further discipline for student B?
So moved.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. And do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Bond, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Part- or, Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton? Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. All right, so there's no better way to add some excitement to a school board meeting than to bring in a bunch of band students. So next we're gonna have the Small Chamber Ensemble from Christiansburg High School. They're with us tonight to perform the National Anthem with their choir director, Mr. David Miller. Thank you so much for that. Never would've thought we could've gotten that many students and instruments in this little spot right here, but that worked out. Yeah. All right, great, thank you so much. And with the day being Veterans Day, we also want to take a moment to say thank you to all our veterans for all their service and their sacrifice to help keep our country safe. And if there are any veterans in the room tonight, we'd like to ask you to stand up and be recognized. Okay, thank you so much. All right, our student representatives tonight are Cyrus Underwood from Eastern Montgomery High School and Avi Gandhi from Christiansburg High School. Will you please read our mission and belief statements?
Okay, so, MCPs is an innovative educational community. We value diversity and we are committed to equity and inclusion. MCPs empowers learners to realize success in an ever-changing global society through collaboration and, through collaboration with communities, families, staff, and students. MCPs provides a safe, engaging learning environment and intentional exposure to positive social, emotional, and academic experiences.
One, all students can learn in order to pursue their dreams. Two, schools are safe places of joy, wonder, and creativity. Three, every person deserves to be loved, valued, and respected. Four, kindness is an essential skill of a responsible, productive community member. Five, the diversity of our community is one of our greatest strengths. Six, all people deserve equitable access to opportunities and resources. Seven, every child deserves an advocate. Eight, honoring the voices of students and other stakeholders strengthens the school community. Nine, open communication and feedback are vital to our growth. Ten, learning and teaching are collective efforts that begin at birth and involve the entire community. Eleven, relationship building and high expectations are foundational to student success.
All right, great, thank you both. Next up, we have our student representative reports. Cyrus, do you have a report from Eastern Montgomery High School?
Yes, sir. Mr. Eaton's Construction Technology Class partnered with Blue Ridge Timber Rights where together they constructed the timber frame for an outdoor educational space. Through this experience, students were able to apply their classroom knowledge to a real world project and participated in the production and construction of the gazebo. At the end of October, the EMHS FFA Officer Team attended the 98th National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, where they attended general sessions, participated in workshops and service projects to improve their personal skills, experienced agriculture career and college fare, and interacted with FFA members from across the country and even the United States Territories. Dr. Hill was named the EMHS Teacher of the Year for his dedication to our students and school. The Interact Club is currently hosting a canned food drive to support the Montgomery County Christmas Store, and some of our art students had the opportunity to work with a nationally-known artist, Doug Heiser, on a mobile mural that will be unveiled at the Meadowbrook Library and will be displayed at several events throughout the New River Valley. Our track is complete, and our cross-country and track athletes have enjoyed running on it. We're also looking forward to hosting events throughout this year in indoor and outdoor track. We hosted a great event for the community during Homecoming Week by adding the first homecoming parade in the history of EMHS. We were able to involve the band, our fall teams, as well as the Eastern Montgomery Parks and Rec Teams and Cheer squads in the parade. The parade was followed by the annual Powderpuff Game, in which the underclassmen defeated the upperclassmen. Our volleyball team went undefeated in the Pioneer District for the first time ever and wrapped up their season with a 19-5 record and won the Pioneer District Title in the Pioneer District Tournament. Boys Cross Country finished another amazing season on Saturday with a second-place finish in the state championship race, with three runners finishing in the top five. Football finished up their season last Friday, wrapping up our fall sports seasons. Athletes now begin to prepare to take on the winter sports season. Our golf team also won the Pioneer District Title. Our band participated in our first band competition. We placed as a band and received, we placed as a band and received a superior rating from our drum major. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cyrus. Avi, do you have a report from Christiansburg High School?
Yes, sir. All right, so since our last school board meeting, CHS has had several exciting events. During October, we sent several students to Falling Branch Elementary School and Bellevue Elementary School to help welcome students to their buildings and celebrate those with perfect attendance. The CHS Marching Band hosted the Third Annual Festival of Bands at CHS in mid-September. We had a packed house for the event, and it was great to see many local marching bands perform. Then we also had College App Days on September 22nd to 24th, which was a success. Many students took advantage of the onsite program for Virginia Tech and Radford. Then we also held FAFSA Night on October 13th to aid families in the FAFSA filing process. Beta Club started its annual Thanksgiving basket collection for Fall 2025 and is currently at 65 baskets. We're continuing to collect through November 14th to support many families in CHS and our Christiansburg community. CHS's Hero of the Week tradition randomly awards students with perfect weekly attendance, and this has become very enjoyable as students genuinely look forward to attending school on Friday to see if they're the hero of the week. Our Corps of Cadets program has had two great opportunities to experience rope courses, climbing walls, and obstacle courses at VMI and Virginia Tech. Christiansburg High School was also selected for the second straight year to host Fired Up Friday by WDBJ7 on Friday, October 3rd. It was a great festival. Many students received free t-shirts, free refreshments, and it was just overall a mimic of a college game day experience. CHS successfully navigated through the Homecoming Week with a variety of spirit-themed days and our trunk-or-treat event and the Homecoming Game with our Homecoming Dance. Despite the inclement weather, we were able to move our trunk-or-treat event inside and had over 30 student-organized clubs and organizations that decorated trunks, well, tables, for the event, and there was a great turnout. Homecoming was themed "Night on the Red Carpet," and this was their first time to utilize the new cafeteria, and many students enjoyed this year's Homecoming. Special thanks to CHS PTSA for all their help and support. And to conclude, the fall athletic teams had had, have had great performances. The CHS volleyball team went undefeated and they're the number-one rank in all classifications and won their district championships. The girls and boys cross-country teams have had a strong finish to their season at the Class III State Championship. The girls finished second in the Class III Cross-Country State Championship, one point away from winning the championship. The boys team placed fourth. Previously, the girls team won its first region championship title in the history of Christian, of the program. The golf team had a great victory in their season by finishing second at the regional tournament and went on to place fifth in the Class III State Championship. The cheer squad had its best season in school history by placing fourth at the Region 3D Championship and scoring its highest score for the season. And lastly, the football team had two program records set this past weekend, with Jeremiah Barnes throwing for 465 yards in a single game and Isaiah Carter finishing with 264 receiving yards in a single game. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Avi. All right, next up, we'll go into our honors, awards, and recognitions. Dr. Lori Comer, our Director of Secondary Education, will start our presentation for Senior of the Month.
Chair Hudson, school board members, Dr. Graham, and student representatives. It is my honor to recognize the remarkable achievements of an outstanding senior from the class of 2026 from each of our four high schools. These students exemplify leadership, character, and dedication. They're leaving a lasting impact on their school communities. Their profiles that are featured here this evening and displayed in the lobby of our central office celebrate the unique talents and accomplishments that they bring. You will also hear reflections from their teachers and administrators who nominated them, highlighting all of their hard work, their perseverance, and their integrity. These exceptional students truly represent the very best of our schools. At this time, each school administrator will come forward to present in the following order. Mr. Hurd, Principal at Auburn High School; Ms. Showalter, Assistant Principal at Blacksburg High School; Mr. Guann, Principal of Christiansburg High School; and Mr. Lewis, Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School. We will begin with Mr. Hurd tonight.
Good evening. The November Senior of the Month for Auburn High School is Alexandra Jopst, if I could ask Alexandra and her family to join me. Alexandra has excelled in every way during her time at Auburn. Her willingness to participate and lead have set her apart from her peers. She's a member of a variety of clubs and organizations and is even the president of the Beta Club. She's tried new things as well by enrolling in a welding class and being a member of the American Welding Society. Two years ago, she was the school board representative and was mature enough for the task as a sophomore. Her French teacher said of Alexandra, "It has been a true pleasure to have Alexandra Jopst as a student throughout her French studies at Auburn High School." From the very beginning, Alex has shown remarkable dedication, enthusiasm, and talent in learning the language. As a current French III student, she consistently brings energy and insight to class, and her absence is genuinely felt when she's not there. Her strong work ethic, curiosity, and positive attitude make her stand out among her peers. I'm proud to have nominated her for the AATF Award, which she so clearly deserves. I have no doubt that Alex has a bright and successful future ahead of her. Alexandra plans to attend a four-year college for pre-med and then plans to continue to medical school and become an anesthesiologist. The world is certainly in short supply of anesthesiologists who can also wail. Congratulations, Alexandra.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Graham, it is my pleasure to present the Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month. This evening, I would like to recognize Clara Ferrera as a November Senior of the Month. I would like to invite Clara and her mother to join me at the front as I read a brief statement from a staff member at BHS. Clara's being honored this evening for her incredible reading, writing, and communication skills that have made her stand out as an amazing student at BHS. Clara loves a challenge, and with haste with reading, she consistently chooses complex and ambitious works, diving deep into challenging narratives with an impressive maturity and insight. Clara is also an excellent writer, and her English papers have often been used as a model for her, for essays for other students because she writes with her distinctive voice filled with warmth and humor. Clara brings her brightness to all her classes, where she is an active, polite participant in discussions, often waiting to let other students have the opportunity to raise their hands before raising her own, which encourages her peers to participate. Clara uses her unique communication skills to organize other students as a dedicated and helpful member of the Student Council, the President of the National Honor Society, a member of the French National Honor Society, and a leader on the varsity swim team. Congratulations, Clara.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Graham, and student representatives. It is my pleasure to introduce the November Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School as Ms. Jenna Seiya. I would like to ask Jenna and her family to come forward at this time. When asking some of her teachers to describe Jenna, they said, "Jenna is the kind of student that every teacher hopes to have in class. Her positive attitude, strong work ethic, and genuine love for learning make her an absolute joy to teach. You can always count on Jenna to get the job done. Her dedication is evident in everything she does, and the accomplishments on her resume speak for themselves. Jenna plays a major role in our Demon Dispatch social media platform and contributed to the planning of the Fired Up Friday event held in October. She is also an active and accomplished member of the CHS DECA chapter. She currently serves as the Vice President and has earned recognition as a DECA Honor Society recipient. Her presence in our building is a bright light, and she exemplifies the best qualities of a CHS student. She is a unique and valued member of our community, making CHS a better place for everyone. Jenna plans to attend a four-year university and compete on the track and field team while also majoring in sports management and minoring in graphic design. Congratulations, Jenna."
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Graham. It is an honor to be here this evening to recognize the November Senior of the Month for Eastern Montgomery High School, Matthew Hilton. Matthew is here with his family and I ask him to come forward at this time. Matthew's Corps of Cadets teacher, Mr. Cataldo, wrote the following, highlighting his qualifications for this honor. Matthew is the EMHS Corps of Cadets Platoon Sergeant. In this role, he leads cadets in daily training like PT, drill, and leadership challenges. He is also the color guard team captain and honorably presents the nation's colors at public events. Matthew has been a dedicated and humble leader throughout his time at EMHS. His dogged work ethic and joyful demeanor serve as positive examples for all of those around him. His selflessness is truly admirable, and the entire EMHS community has benefited from him these past four years. Please join me in congratulating Matthew Hilton as the EMHS November Senior of the Month.
Okay, thanks, everybody. At this point, the board will take a quick break. I'd like to come down there and thank our honorees and their families for being here tonight. I guess we'd ask the students and their families maybe, maybe come back up front there, so the board can swing by and shake your hand and say thanks.
Clara: Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. Graham. It is my pleasure to introduce the November Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School as Ms. Jenna Seiya. I would like to ask Jenna and her family to come forward at this time.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It's actually kind of late for me to be doing this because last year at this time, you did something really great for grounds. You doubled our workforce. You gave us a pay raise. You got us new equipment, and I hope you've seen the results. I mean, my guys are so proud of what we can do now. We've gone from being the guys that just fight to keep up, that try to not leave a mess, to the guys that really want to do something that's going to make y'all proud and the students proud especially. So this is my chance to face-to-face say thank you all because it means everything to us to be a group that can be proud. Grounds, it's kind of hard to understand. The only time anybody says anything to you is when it's not right. Actually, I guess you guys probably do understand how that goes. But it's only through complaints that you know that somebody knows you exist, but when it's quiet, you actually know, hey, we're doing a good job. So we haven't had a whole lot of atta boys this year, but we haven't had any complaints. And it just, I want to say thank you for helping us make that happen because it really has made a world of difference to us. And that's kind of why I want to be here tonight, is with all the things that you did for us, we also have a large workforce in our facilities group. And the support that you showed us, you can show to those guys and gals as well. You know, they work every bit as hard as we do. They do all the things that we do. We have carpenters that do our grounds work when we need help. We help them when they need cleanup. We change filters in schools. The electricians or plumbers. I mean, we have a fantastic group of guys that'll do anything that the county needs to make, you know, the school the best that it can be for all the students. And, you know, I guess the biggest thing that I want you to know is that we appreciate everything you did for us last year, and it's not going to be that hard to spread that love. You know, the morale in the facilities department is so much better now than it's ever been before. We have two fantastic leaders in Dr. Brown and Mr. Feifel. We have great leads, and we have a great crews, and they all want to do a great job for you, and they'd want to do a great job for the kids because it means something to us. And all I'm asking is that you consider the rest of our shop. You don't need to do anything else for grounds. Y'all are wonderful to us, but just consider the rest of our shop when you go about the budget this year. And also, I hate to add this in because this is me kind of asking for something. We got a lot of new schools, a lot of schools have just been renovated. You know, what our budget was before doesn't necessarily cover everything that's been added on to new schools. A lot of the stuff that we had in reserve doesn't even apply to schools anymore. So if you can help us out with that also, you know, keep in mind that there are new needs every year. And every time a new school like Christiansburg High School is open, there are things that we're going to have to change the way we do things. Things are obsolete, new tools that we need. And all we want to do, we're not asking for money because it makes us feel more powerful. We're asking for money so we can do the right thing for you guys and the schools. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, representing the bus aides, drivers, car, van, transport, and mechanics is Jason Lawrence.
Good afternoon, Chair Hudson, Board members, and Dr. Graham. I'm here representing the Transportation Department. On behalf of our department employees, I would like to start by thanking you for everything you've done to support us, especially last year's pay increase. That decision made a real difference in the lives of our drivers, technicians, and staff. We're truly grateful for your recognition of the work that we do every day to keep students safe and on time. As we look ahead to next year's budget, transportation employees have identified our top three priorities. These priorities reflect what we believe are the most important to maintaining safer, liable, and professional transportation systems for our students and schools. First, we need competitive pay for our drivers. To help us recruit and retain qualified people, even with last year's increase, we're still competing with other districts, private employers, offering similar or higher wages. Stable, consistent staffing is critical for the student safety and daily reliability, and higher pay is the key to achieving that. We have faced driver shortages for several years now, and I think the increase in the pay for our drivers would help us fill those shortages. Second, our employees are asking for better access to benefits, including health insurance. Some of the drivers, who were the lifeblood of our department, don't have enough, you know, don't work enough hours to qualify for insurance right now. And I think that if we could offer an affordable health coverage to those drivers, that would show MCPS that MCPS values every member of the team, not just as employees but as people. And third, we want to maintain our commitment to replacing our aging school bus fleet. Each year, the newer buses mean fewer maintenance issues, improved safety, better fuel efficiency, and more reliable fleet. Regular bus replacement is one of the best investments we can make for both safety and sustainability. In closing, thank you again for your continued support and for listening to the voices of our transportation employees.
Great, thank you. Next up, representing our nurses, we have Austin Arden.
Good evening, Board, Chair. I want to thank you. First off, you have now 24 nurses in your buildings. It's an increase from two. And those nurses, they make a big impact in your community and in your buildings. Some of them are here today also supporting me up here, which I really appreciate, and they do great work for your children. Again, they saw over 90,000 kids. That's a lot of kids. Broken arms, chronic conditions, seizures, diabetics. They make an impact. Ask your administrators. They're not happy when a nurse isn't in the building, are they? No, I hear about that. Nurses, they're the cornerstone to health and safety in the building. They manage your chronic illnesses, your outbreaks, your disease responses. They triage those headaches, those stomachaches, those boobos, those ice packs, right? I'm here to argue for two, ask for two things. Something that you all have brought up before, RN pay, and the difference between licensure and certification, which I will go over, as well as an increase in substitute pay. Okay, so first off, you have a couple different types of nurses in your building. You have LPNs, RNs. RNs can be two different degrees, an associate-prepared nurse or a bachelor's-prepared nurse. So far, you have different pay scales for RN and LPN. You have no paid scale for a master's-prepared nurse like I am, as well as a sub or two, and you have no paid scale for a doctorate-prepared nurse either, okay? The pay breakdown between your RNs and LPNs, it's important because what you do here is you educate, and that is a big part of RN licensure. They have the ability to educate your paraprofessionals and your bus drivers and get everybody, the whole team, involved to help with these chronic conditions. I've met some amazing LPNs, and it's not to discount those nurses, but there is a difference in what they can do and what they're allowed to do as far as writing plan of cares for your kids for your parents to follow. Beyond that, there's a master's-prepared nurse. Different master's degrees, you can have pediatric nurse practitioner, which can write prescriptions. You can have degrees which go into public health and safety, but these are all things that you can use to fill in those cracks where you have kids who can't be in school due to immunizations or not getting a physical, right? This can decrease your absentee rate. This can help fill your seats with those kids. A breakdown of some of the numbers that I have found that you can look at. We are fairly close to those counties around us, but they have some big hospitals around us too. So the question is, do we want to be on the forefront and really recruit those high-quality nurses that you want? Because you want the best for your kids, right? I have incorporated some other numbers from Charlottesville, Newport News, Williamsburg, James City, and I think that's more accurate and representative of where we need to be for our RN salary. A couple more dollars. You can also see the LPN salary here. We're not doing that bad, but overall, a few more dollars would go a long way to recruiting those high-quality RNs that we want. Thanks. Next is substitute pay. We are behind Plasky. I couldn't get enough information from some of the counties around, but when you have those high-quality nurses who are not in your buildings, you want somebody else who's going to be able to step in and pick up that slack. Having a lower substitute rate really hurts filling those spots when we don't have nurses there. don't have nurses there, right? There have been a couple of your buildings that didn't have nurses toward the beginning of the year, and increasing that subpay can help, okay? You are, have done pretty well as far as taking health seriously at Montgomery County. We have a nurse in every building, and we're lucky to have that. There's a lot of counties around that have EMTs or a nurse that comes once, twice a week. You guys have, we've made progress, right? We are now following the AAP recommendation to have at least one to every 750 students. Hopefully, we can increase that nurse pay, as you guys have brought up recently. And I, I know quite a few nurses would, would appreciate seeing a school-based health clinic eventually down the road. If your kids aren't healthy, they're not going to be in their seats, they're not going to be in school. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, representing administrative assistants, bookkeepers, HR, and payroll specialists is Lori Walls.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to present our budget proposal for the 2026-27 school year. I have the honor of working with Montgomery County Schools for over 30 years, and I can express how much I love this county and the people who work here. Throughout my career, I have worked in both the schools and the central office. No matter where I've been, I have encountered the hardest-working individuals I have ever had the pleasure to work with. They ensure that our students, staff, and parents are greeted with a smile and always available to help. They make certain we are paid on time. Even when we transitioned from once a month to twice a month for the benefit of all employees, that change was seamless, thanks to their hard work. These dedicated individuals are responsible for hiring staff and faculty before the school year begins and to continue to support staffing needs throughout the year. They also manage the ordering of new books and supplies for the schools, handle bill payments, produce reports, process paperwork for stipends, schedules student teachers. They truly are the glue that holds our system together. Their dedication is remarkable. They work 12 months a year under a contract for 260 days, and they consistently fulfill that commitment. The work continues even when school is out. Throughout the summer, they register new students, place and distribute orders, mail print schedules, clean out files, process payroll, and hire new employees. We work year-round and take great pride in our work. Historically, Montgomery County Public Schools was the preferred place to work. Many people still want to be part of our team, but we struggle to compete with the salaries offered by surrounding areas. We have lost staff to the Montgomery County Government and other employers. Recently, one of our employees left our system to accept a similar county government position, which included a $12,000 increase in pay. During interviews, the salary is often the deciding factor that prevents candidates from accepting our job offers. I've gathered data on salaries from neighboring counties and the Montgomery County Government. I know we want to do everything possible to retain our exceptional staff, so please consider funding our proposals that will help keep MCPS a great place to make a career. Thank you for your time, and I'll give Tosh, so you can see the comparisons. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up, representing technology, including senior specialists, systems integrators, technicians, and testing coordinators, we have Brad Marion.
Good afternoon, Chair Hudson, members of the Board, and Dr. Graham. My name is Brad Marion, I'm the IT Help Desk. For some of y'all, this may be the first time you ever see my face, and other times maybe this is just another time you hear my voice. As the IT Help Desk, I'm representing the Technology Department this year, kind of the forefront of a lot of the issues that we receive in our department. Sometimes it's on my job to make sure we get those fixed. First off, I'd like to thank Board and members of the county for helping us improve our operational facilities, especially this past year with the parking lot fixing and expansion to new spots, and we can better navigate around and get our work fields in right spots. Additionally, with the new windows in the back, that has been a great help in improving the work life, especially, many people have commented that, you know, feels more easy to breathe in the department. And then, lastly, fixing bathrooms, a major complaint that we had was the bathroom situation and some of the water issues, and those are being addressed at that time. We'd like to thank you for that. To continue, our department, some of our major projects that we're working on, as many of you have noticed, we are upgrading our computers to Windows 11 and upgrading several other services that come along with that, and we are progressively throwing that, getting some bumps along the way, but we're pushing through that, especially experiencing some of the problems getting the equipment at our desks. And then, especially with Christiansburg, our AV team onsite, especially with just the rising cost of equipment for that, constantly having to buy new equipment because the new problems arise with that worth. And then additionally, crumbly costs have definitely not been getting any bit cheaper for us, and parts have only gone double, it feels like, at times, for those units. And it's just, you know, constantly getting a hold of that part and getting that turnaround for those. And our IS department's currently working on getting the reporting and stating for us, especially with some of our systems like Apogee and Lexia, that forms our roster and caller system, so we can inform parent situation at time. Some of the biggest department requests that we have so far is new lighting for our downstairs offices. Many of us have voiced that the lighting is either broken or incredibly outdated. In fact, my office has several yellowing lights, so that is one thing we have noticed across just the operations facility, lighting there. And additionally, we would like raises to our budget just for those rising costs of our services like security for students, must come with securely, and our educational platforms like iExcel. Equipment overall, though, has risen too, and that's another thing to take note of, especially with the rising amount of students that we have and services we're providing for those students. We need stronger equipment at the base. Overall, I'd like to thank you all for everything that you have done, and of course, our employees would greatly appreciate rising in the overall budget, employee pay, or, and upgrades to the operations facility. I thank you guys for your time.
Great, thank you. Next up, representing a purchasing warehouse, we have Mike Hall.
Good evening, members of the Board, student representatives, Dr. Graham. I'm representing the warehouse this evening, and I kind of want to skip, kind of stole my thunder. It's the same sort of thing for us. First, I want to thank you. Last year, we asked for additional risers for the school. We received those, it has already made an impact. We already had three schools schedule events within four days of one another, and we were able to actually fulfill the needs without having to get with the schools to have them reschedule events, so it's just, it's a wonderful thing. We see the, the work that you're doing, it shows up in everything that we do. Let's see. We're now able to place a handful of risers at multiple schools, eliminating the need to constantly move on a daily basis as the holiday season comes in. No one's having to postpone shows yet, knock on wood, I think that's great. Next, we'd like to thank you for the new box truck, a world of difference. We actually have a lift gate now that will, will hold a full pallet of merchandise. It makes everything logistically so much easier, so much better for all of us. The previous truck had a lot of miles, visible wear, tear throughout many years of its been in, in service. The new truck has more square footage in the back, a lot of new safety and technology features, provides an overall comfortable, you know, work environment for us. We appreciate the much-needed improvements, and thank you for your ongoing support and efforts to improve support staff pay, and we see that as well. And I'd just like to say, it's, it's a group effort, everyone in facilities, transportation, technology, grounds, I hope I'm not admitting anybody, the plumbers, the electricians, they help us all on a daily basis. It's, it's a wonderful thing, so thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you, sir. Next up, representing teachers, we have Jay Mathis.
I have to follow all those rock stars, that's awesome. Good evening, Board, Dr. Graham, thank you for inviting us to do these presentations tonight. A quick introduction, I am Jay Mathis, I teach at Blacksburg High School. This is my sixth year there, I teach cybersecurity and computer programming, a very successful program there. We have successful programs at Auburn High School and Christiansburg High School as well for cyber. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of CTE teachers from Montgomery County, specifically CTE teachers. And a few things that I wanted to address, in my previous life, and, and as I'll talk about in a moment, most of your CTE teachers here in Montgomery County are, are career switchers. We came from various career fields, most of us very successful in those career fields. I myself had a 20-year military career and a four-year career in healthcare doing cybersecurity. And we have a lot of, a lot of CTE teachers that have come from different careers, and we've chosen to be in the schools, we've chosen to, to teach these kids what we know, and then hopefully some parts and things that's going to help them be even more successful in their academic and professional lives. So with that, part of my, a big part of my previous life was data analysis. I was a data analytics guy for the Navy and also for HCA Healthcare. So when I found out that I was invited to do this, I immediately dug in and I started collecting data, reaching out to our CTE teachers in the county and said, hey, here's what I'm going to go do, what do they want, what do they need to know? And I got an overwhelming, very quick and very forceful response from my colleagues across the county. Some primary things I'd like to address real quick in my time here this evening. First of all, thank you again for allowing the opportunity. Kind of three big issues reared their heads as I was collecting this data over the last several days. The biggest one being, of course, as we all kind of can, can figure, pay. Compensation is a big thing, it's always going to be a big thing, I think, and in the CTE world, it's a little bit of a different animal, as I came to discover, and as I agree with my colleagues with the, the information they came back to me with. We receive our teacher pay, we have our salary scales, much like the other teachers in the county, but what makes us unique in the CTE world is the Virginia Department of Education, when you teach a CTE course at a high school or a middle school, the VDOE requires that high school or middle school to have what we call a CTSO, or a, a Career and Technical Student Organization. Some examples of those, I'll just take Blacksburg High School, for example, DECA, FBLA, FCCLA, Future Childcare Leaders of America, Skills USA, which the last time I stood before the Board, I stood up here with our state champion cybersecurity team for Skills USA, and just various different CTSOs. So if you teach a CTE course in a school, you're supposed to have, as a VDOE requirement, a CTSO to go along with that. Now, that CTSO is a part of that three-pronged approach to teaching CTE. There's of course the curriculum, the CTSO, and then your high-quality work-based learning opportunities, which we're doing a really good job of in the county of identifying those high-quality work-based learning students, working with those. But the CTSOs were one of the main things that the teachers came back to me that they had sort of, not necessarily an issue with, but wanted to be able to address. A lot of those CTSO advisors are compensated in such a way to where they receive the extended contract in their school year, whether that be the 10 and a half, 11-month, or what have you, and that's kind of how they're compensated for running those CTSOs. But that's the only way currently. There are several teachers in the county, CTE teachers in the county, that are very active in advising their CTOs in the schools, that are not compensated for that time in any way, shape, or form, whether it be a stipend or an extended contract. That's an issue that I think definitely needs to be addressed in the budget. Not every teacher, you know, desires an extended contract, or not every teacher, you know, can do that summertime thing with, you know, family obligations and things like that. But, again, with the data analysis part, I went out and started looking at surrounding counties and counties in the state of Virginia. Many counties in the state of Virginia do stipends for CTSOs, CT teachers that advise a CTSO. So I'd like to bring to the Board a consideration that when you start talking about your budgets and teacher compensations, that we really take an eye and put an eye on how we're compensating our CTE teachers when they do CTSOs. Some teachers I've come to find, and it was a little bit alarming to me, having been here only six years, there's other teachers that have been in the county decades that have been advising some of these CTSOs for decades and have never received extra compensation for it. That was surprising to me, and a little bit alarming, to be honest. So again, I'd like to bring that to the Board's attention, and I'd like to have it as a consideration when you discuss your budget, to compensate these teachers. The other thing I ask for from the teachers, how many hours do you put into your CTSOs? And we're talking, on average, well over several hundred hours per school year that the teachers are dedicating to these CTSOs and their students. I've seen that firsthand with Skills USA at Blacksburg High School, hundreds of hours. We get these kids where they need to go to compete, we give them the curriculum and the knowledge they need to be successful. CTSOs are one of the primary considerations on college applications and things like that when these students go to apply for that next level. So again, I won't take a whole lot more of your time, but that's one of the main things that came back to me, was, hey, can we please look at some sort of compensation for our teachers that are doing so much in the CT world for these CTSOs? Couple other quick things I just want to put to, put to the Board before I get out of here. As a cybersecurity teacher, one of the primary things I teach is physical security, is a tenant, it is a pillar of cybersecurity, it is a pillar of the information security triangle. So I would like the Board to also consider in your budget that we keep up to date and we keep innovative with our school safety and security programs and processes. AI detection, weapons detection, facial recognition, we have security cameras in the schools. They are good, they do what they're supposed to do. We need to go beyond and we need to go further as we consider our budget in the future for school safety and security. Proper training for school staff is huge, and again, equipment in the schools that are allow us to detect and deter early would be super, super beneficial. And that's pretty much what I had down for the three big issues. Again, the CTSO pay, school safety and security, and then the overall total compensation. One thing I will mention that I was hesitant to mention, but I think I'm going to, just a couple seconds here, when we talk about compensating CTE teachers, most of us, as I said, are career switchers. Most of us, I don't want to sound boastful, we took pretty decent pay cuts to be in the position we're in. So as we consider compensation overall for our teachers, and, and total compensation, healthcare packages, things of that nature, please keep in mind that we want to keep the best talent we can in the classrooms, and if we could do everything possible to do so. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Next up, representing school nutrition, we have Michelle Knotts.
Board Chair Hudson, School Board members, Dr. Graham, student representatives, my name is Michelle Knotts. I'm a supervisor of school nutrition for Montgomery County Public Schools. Thank you for allowing me a few moments to speak on behalf of our Nutrition Department this evening. I would like to address two topics tonight. Staffing is first, and equipment needs is the second. In my two-and-a-half-year tenure here at MCPS, we have made great strides in making Montgomery Public Schools the employer of choice. I thank you for your support. We have moved the needle on wages, but our work is not done. It is, it is vital that we remain competitive with the ever-changing employment market. To be competitive, we need to have competitive wages, and understand that those wages may need to be revisited often in order to attract the most qualified individuals to our food service department. As we are aware, our food service management company, Sodexo, is responsible to source and hire all new food service employees. However, we, MCPS, can dictate what that starting rate of pay is, since after all, we pay for all the food service labor. Our current starting rate of pay is $15.75. I am asking the Board to please consider increasing that rate of pay to $17 as we enter the school year 26-27. As we consider this increase, I would be amiss if I did not ask the Board to consider a 7% increase in wages for our current MCPS food service employees. Our MCPS food service employees and managers are the backbone to our department. They are leaned on to train and share their many, many years of experience and talent with the incoming new Sodexo employees. with the incoming new Sodexo employees. As far as equipment needs, do you know that we have a steam kettle at Bellevue Elementary that is 50 years old? That's right, 1975 that steam kettle went in. Or, we also have a double-stack Blodgett oven at Margaret Beeks from 1980. Why, we certainly got our money's worth. The reality is, is we can no longer order parts, they're obsolete. We have many, many pieces of equipment in our kitchens that are more than 20-plus years old. Many pieces are inoperable, and those that work do not do their potential, making it extremely frustrating for our staff. Work orders from the S&amp;P Department to facilities are at an all-time high this year. The work orders absorb the already limited hours our facility teams have to simply continue to put Band-Aids on these dinosaurs. While our department is aggressive and successful at applying for twice-per-year equipment grant opportunities, the grant funding may cover one or two pieces if awarded. And of course, this funding is not guaranteed. As we challenge ourselves to include new feeding pro, excuse me, as we challenge ourselves to introduce new feeding programs and any and all avenues to provide access to meals for our community as seen this past summer, now is the time to invest in permanently replacing kitchen equipment. While this process will take multiple years, I would be happy to develop a five-year replacement plan addressing our biggest, biggest needs in school year 26-27. With that in mind, I would like the Board to consider a budget investment of $300,000 for school year 26-27. In conclusion, I want to thank our Board for your continued support in taking the time to listen to our needs. One can argue that feeding our children is the single most important responsibility we have on a daily basis. Please allow us the tools we need to continue to be successful. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up representing the MCE, MCEA, we have Katie Seidman.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the Board, student representatives, and Dr. Graham. My name is Katie Seidman, I'm the President of the Montgomery County Education Association, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Before I make my presentation, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their work and their previous presentations this evening. I ask that you listen to them and honor their requests as best you can. A successful school division requires a strong team of professionals working together to achieve the best working and learning conditions possible. We know that our staff's working conditions are our students' learning conditions. We truly have the best staff in Montgomery County Public Schools, and our dedicated and steadfast workers should feel valued by their employer with the follow-through of funding to know that they are valued by their employer. I have five budget-related areas that we believe are important to the continued success of MCPS. The first being salary. The MCEA fully supports a salary increase for all employees, which includes our hourly and part-time employees. This enhancement will continue to allow MCPS to be competitive when it comes to attracting, attracting and retaining highly qualified employees. This does not only apply to certified staff, but competitive pay will also benefit our various classified staff positions when compared to the private sector, as many of my colleagues have previously stated. As you're well aware, inflation continues to be a major problem, and many of our employees are single-income households with massive amount of student loan debt. When the cost of basic goods and services increase, it can in turn cause financial stress if salaries remain stagnant. We are asking for at least a 3%, up to a 5% salary enhancement to counteract this increasing costs. Inflation, however, is not the only reason this number is reasonable. MCPS employees have gone above and continue to go above and beyond the call of duty. Not only have educators adapted to the current and previous educational environments, but they have done it with professionalism, enthusiasm, and care for students. Virginia's average teacher salary is $5,703 below the national average, which in turn ranks our, ranks our state 26th nationally in regards to teacher pay. Additionally, teachers in Virginia are paid an average of 67 cents for each dollar paid to their similarly educated peers in other professions. MCPS is not an exception to this pay gap. Additionally, as the other employee groups mentioned tonight, MCPS is not keeping pace with the pay rates of the private sector. Our nurses, mechanics, and techs, grounds workers, administrative assistants, et cetera, want to work for MCPS, so they should be able to afford to work for MCPS with a pay rate comparable to our surrounding employers. As an, as the overwhelming majority of our representatives have stated tonight, our employees deserve a living wage, being able to work, to live in the place that you work. Ensuring a living wage for our employees can make the difference between remaining an MCPS employee and not. Our employees are working professionals, and they deserve to be paid like it. A strong budget is a people-first budget, and we ask that you honor a proposed salary increase for all employees. The second thing I'd like to discuss is health insurance. Once again, we're requesting no increase in healthcare costs, healthcare premium costs for the upcoming school year. We're thankful to the administration for working to keep benefit costs the same as previous years by coming up with creative and manageable solutions to offset the increasing costs of health premiums. We ask that you keep it front of mind that any increase in health costs will ultimately be a pay decrease for our employees. Next, I'd like to talk about health and safety. The health and safety of all students and employees is vital to our division's success. We ask that you always keep that in mind, which I know that you do, especially when considering student behavior within the school day. Our employees are often asked to manage student misbehavior at the expense of their mental and even physical health and well-being. We ask that funding continue to be considered to support and expand student services, specifically licensed counselors, special education teachers, and special education aides. Next, I'd like to continue our discussion on the RIHIP program, which is incredibly successful in MCPS. The MCEA supports the continued use of this program in order to attract and retain high-quality substitutes. It's no secret that former teachers make the best substitutes. The MCEA supports giving retired teachers the ability to maintain their health insurance or Medicare-eligible so that they can continue to support Montgomery County. Next, we would like to bring a new budget consideration to you, paid parental leave. This item has been requested by members and non-members alike for several years. However, this year in particular, we've heard multiple concerns from staff regarding this issue. We would like to work with collaboratively with MCPS administration and the school board to explore our current leave policy, to see how we can make this a feasible option for our school system. We believe a paid parental leave policy would bring and keep great educators who are looking for a place that would give their families the strongest foundation possible. It would also allow our district to complete, compete with Fairfax County and other districts who have paid parental leave. We would appreciate the support of the Board as well as the community on this issue. Lastly, I would like to thank the Board and Dr. Graham for your continued support for collective bargaining for MCPS staff. While there is no specific budget request related to collective bargaining, we appreciate the Board's support for staff priorities reflected in your budget decisions. The MCEA is grateful to the MCPS administration and to the school board. We appreciate the hard work you do every day and are thankful to be given this opportunity to speak regarding the budget. As professionals entrusted to teach generations of educated citizens, we ask that you continue to make a significant investment in our students and our staff members. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Lastly, we have Shane Nguyen, here to represent principals.
I guess I drew the short straw tonight. On another note, we just won the regional title. Sorry. Our volleyball team is playing right now at home for the region title, and we just won, so a few people were keeping up with that. Okay, so on to some other, other things. Good evening again, Dr. Graham, members of the Board, and everyone in attendance. On behalf of the principals, I just want to take a few moments to express our deep appreciation for your continued advocacy and support throughout the budgeting process. It's never easy. The time, thought, and collaboration you devote to this work truly makes a difference, not just in our schools, but in the lives of our students and communities that we all serve. At times, I know you see long lists of needs and requests, but what might look like a series of line items to you often becomes something transformational for us at the school level, things that change how we teach, how we support, and how we serve our students. Because of your efforts over the past two years, we have seen tremendous tangible impacts across our schools. At Christiansburg High School, we could not be more grateful for the new construction and renovation project that is near completion. Thank God. It is truly helping us move closer to a campus that meets our students', faculty', and communities' needs. The addition of a school nurse positions at Christiansburg and Blacksburg High Schools has strengthened daily care and student safety. EMH's new track renovation and auditorium updates, including LED lighting and fresh paint, show visible investment in both athletics and the arts. At Auburn High School, the addition of a literacy coach has been a tremendous boost to instructional support, while the new security cameras there and at Blacksburg High School have enhanced safety across both campuses. The additional school counselor at BHS has made a meaningful difference in meeting student needs. At CHS, piano lab updates have and will create new opportunities for hands-on learning and modernized music instruction. The new full-time 504 coordinator positions for the county, the increase in field trip funding, the continued coverage for free breakfast for all students ensure equity and access for every student. The new IT DART positions have improved technology support and instructional continuity. Increase in staff that includes reading specialists and other support coach roles have helped to strengthen instructional practices. And the countywide support for our newcomers program has been transformational for students who are new to our country, providing both targeted English instruction and a sense of belonging. Each of these successes represents your leadership and your belief in what our schools can accomplish when we work together. We know that our schools continue to grow, new needs will arise. We want to continue advocating for several important areas that would make a strong impact. These include: An assistant athletic director stipend at our larger high schools to better manage and supervise events and programs. The need for a full-time assistant principal at every elementary school instead of an AP that is splitting duties between multiple elementary schools. A dean of students and/or a shared AP between the two largest middle schools. Staffing for a testing coordinator and a business marketing courses at EMHS. Stadium upgrades at Auburn High School, including turf and a rubberized track. Additional staffing for an American Sign Language teacher across the county. An additional assistant principal at BHS to help meet growing administrative and student support demands. Continued improvements to athletic facilities, playgrounds, expanded field trip opportunities, and ongoing assistance with covering the cost of officials and event security. Opportunity to offer free lunch to all students of MCPS. And continued necessity facility upgrades to each school that can include new flooring, furniture, paint, and capital improvement projects. Each of these requests, like the ones you've already made possible or already heard, represents more than just a line and a budget, it is a direct investment in the safety, learning, and growth of our students. So on behalf of all the principals and the countless students, staff, and families we represent, thank you. Thank you for your steadfast support, your thoughtful decision-making, and your unwavering commitment to our schools. Your leadership allows us to dream bigger, serve better, and continue building the best possible future for MCPS students. Thank you again.
Great, thank you. And thank you to everyone who came out tonight to present and to support, and it's great to hear from all of our different groups within MCPS when it comes time for budgets. With that, we're going to move on to public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. As a reminder, the Board sets aside 30 minutes to start our public address. We have the option to extend in 30-minute increments, which Ms. Osborne will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after 90 minutes, the Board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional 30-minute session at the end. Clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers who get to address the Board. I'll call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the Board. The Board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when their time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county that you live in. Our first speaker tonight only signed up with one name, Crawford. I don't know if there's a first name with that, but come on up.
What information do you need from me? Just my name and...
Name and the area of the county that you live in.
All right, I'm Christiansburg, last name is Crawford. I want to talk about just some of the fiduciary responsibilities that we have. And first off, fair compensation is always the easiest way to fulfill your fiduciary responsibilities. So again, fair compensation is always the easiest way to fulfill your fiduciary responsibilities. Now, fiduciary responsibility is when it specifically comes to the search for a new superintendent. I'm not sure how much you paid the survey team, but it's going to be up to the Board to recoup that money. When you interview potential candidates, you'll need to ask specific questions regarding our specific issues. If you don't hire any of them, you can at least crowdsource some possible solutions. So for example, we have thousands of dollars of Plexiglas in storage, easy solution. We have a lot of CAD equipment going to some of the schools. You know, give that to the students, let them make something, let them sell it, make some money for the clubs. Another issue is desperate treatment and issuance of discipline. So a solution to that would be update the standards or make a standardized form to accurately record the events preceding events that lead to disciplinary actions. Financial incentive the staff to do so through, through, through discipline reports to reduce the cost of appeals and possible lawsuits. Specifically, when discipline reports note nothing preceding events, it is up to the review and concurrence process to investigate further. The superintendent will decide how to conduct the review and concurrence of discipline. If staff do their due diligence, right, and untimely investigation and interviews, if they, sorry, if they don't do that, it will result in a loss of trust of the system as a whole from the students. So detailed reports are less interpretive, less emotionally influenced, you know, less using your imagination to fill in the blanks. A more stoic, deductively reasoned assessment is paramount when it comes to the macro data when that's collected, because the disparities will be found, but it's going to be the difference between a systematic issue or systemic issue that needs a seismic solution or individual occurrences that need more precise surgical countermeasures to ameliorate the causes. So start brainstorming and don't rely on the recommendations of necessarily outsourced third-party when it comes to the future leadership of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Dave Sisson.
Dr. Graham, members of the school board, student representatives, Tyrus, good to see you again. First of all, congratulations to those who were elected to the Board last week, and God bless you for your work. And sitting here tonight, I just say, I'm glad it's you and not me, but thank you for serving the people as community. I had a handout, I'm not sure if you received that handout, I wanted to just bring that to your attention if you have that in your hand. I was born here in the county, went to high school here, grew up in Shawsville, sorry, I am from Elliston, sorry. And I returned after being gone. For the last 20 years, I've been involved as a substitute teacher, a part-time baseball, football, and basketball coach at Eastern Montgomery and Shawsville Middle School. My handout for you, I'm, I don't come to all the meetings, so I'm not sure if anyone's ever brought this to your attention. Most of you do not serve down there in the area. And I noticed this because I'm a business owner, I travel a lot, I've been a school administrator in my past, and I notice these things because playing sports, and I notice the signboards in the county are not consistent, the discrepancy. When you look at the, the pictures of the, of Auburn High School, Blacksburg High School, Christiansburg High School, each one of them has, have, have, have the billboards or the signboards that are perpendicular to the roads that are, that are brought to them, and their signs are on both sides. If you go to Route 8 and go to Auburn, past Auburn High School, you'll see listed of events on both sides of the signs telling people activities, the events, the students of the month. When you come to Eastern Montgomery High School, the sign is set parallel to Route 460 and 11, and the only... 460 and 11, and the only time you can read what's on the billboard is if you're stopped at the light. And so I know Tyrus, when he plays basketball, he wants people to come and watch him play. And if he's not part of the members of the family, how do they know? Most people are not going to go online and go on and check it. And so my issue is here is that these students at Eastern Montgomery should be treated fairly as the other three high schools. And if you'll even notice on this, when you approach going from west to east or north to south on Eastern Montgomery High School, see that little white spot on the right? That's the billboard that people read. They can't see it. And I'm not sure if you were on the board when these decisions were made, but someone made those decisions. And none of the principals, as far as I know, have ever been from Eastern Montgomery area. And so nobody takes attention to it. Now you say, what's your desire? My kids aren't here, my grandkids aren't here. I don't even coach there anymore. But I go to the athletic events. I do attend those things.
Great, thank you, sir. I'm sorry your time's up.
Okay, thank you for your time. I hope you consider something here. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else signed up, a public address is closed. All right, that takes us to our consent items. No one wishes to move an item out of consent? We will consider these items approved. All right. Next up, financial reports. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the financial summary report for October 2025?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Ms. Bond, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. And then, do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Gitry and Ms. Bond, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, and that brings us to our business meeting. We will start with a report from our superintendent.
Good evening. Since we heard from several employee groups tonight, I think this is an opportune time to recognize how important each and every group is to making our division work. Students see our instructional staff, our office staff, and every single day, and they know and they count on those staff members. We hope that they also know their custodian, their bus drivers, the nurses, the cafeteria staff. We hope that they know them by name and know how much they do for them. We should also stop and realize all the departments that make our schools great. Technology, maintenance, facilities, carpenters, warehouse staff, human resources, nutrition, finance, central office staff, and all the others. Everyone works as part of the team to make our schools the best. And I want to say how much we appreciate each group taking the time to come and talk to the board tonight. It means a lot, and it tells us a lot. So thank you to everyone. I had the opportunity to attend the job fair on Saturday, and I think we found some great candidates. And I also want to thank all those who organized that job fair and those who came out to interview. That's so important to find the right employees. I have just a few special shout-outs tonight. First, congratulations to Ms. Bond and Ms. Parton, who were elected again to serve as board members. Sadly, Mr. Hudson did not run again. But however, congratulations to Matthew Roberts, who will be joining the board in January. Next, our Director of Elementary Education, Ann Mitchell, just completed her dissertation, and she is now Dr. Mitchell. Congratulations. And finally, the U.S. News and World Report recently ranked Harding Avenue Elementary as the 23rd-best elementary school in Virginia. Congratulations to the Panthers.
Great, thank you. Next up, we'll give a quick update on the superintendent's search. So our last meeting, we had BWP here. They gave us a summary of kind of the survey findings and all the feedback that they'd gotten. So as a board, we took that in addition to their kind of initial draft of the leadership profile. We made some rather minor edits to that and submitted an updated leadership profile for them. But that's been, I assume at this point, that's gone out and has been shared with applicants and stuff. So we're currently just kind of waiting for the application deadline to close. That'll come up here in a couple weeks. So then the board will have several meetings in December to start reviewing candidates, working on the initial, the first round of interviews, the final interviews and stuff. So we will have an update at our next scheduled board meeting, because we will have met the night before to kind of do that first round of review. So we'll have a good sense for where we are. I've heard we've had numerous candidates apply, so that's exciting. And we'll see where we end in terms of our candidate pool and all the good people that we'll be talking to, so. Is there anything I'm missing on that from an update standpoint? That covers the highlights. Okay, great.
I was going to ask a question. Do you know how many candidates have applied? Have you gotten that number?
When I talked to Dr. Kastner last week, I think he said, oh gosh, I think he said 12 or 13, if I'm not mistaken. And that was before the leadership profile had actually gone out, so. I think we're going to have plenty of candidates to look at, which is a good thing. Right. It's coming up. Yeah, right. All right, great. Next up, do I have a motion to authorize a supplemental appropriation to the 2025-26 school operating budget in the amount of $1,040,000?
So moved.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin, any discussion?
Yeah, is this where we were supplementing our maintenance and we got an email about our carpenters? This isn't the same one? Okay.
Can we get a quick summary on what this is?
Ms. Bland?
Yeah, operations and maintenance. I thought it was involved in this one. It's not, okay. Sorry.
This request in front of you is actually a request for appropriation of funds. So this is actually for ESER funding. So this has been held for over a year and a half, and with the delay in the federal reimbursements. We spent the money last year, did the request almost immediately after the funds were spent and everything was paid for, and then everything shut down with the federal government. So just several weeks ago, we finally received those funds, and so we're able now to move that back over. And this is over and above anything that was budgeted, you know, with our revenues as part of our operating budget, so allows us to move the money into the operating budget and just help cover all those costs. Last year, in order to receive this funding, you have to go ahead and make those purchases ahead of time, and it's on a reimbursable basis. So a lot of things were purchased that weren't necessarily part of the original planned budget. So this will allow them to put funds back in and do some of the things that they need to do through the remainder of the year.
Thanks for clarifying. Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, the administration presented Policy 7-1.6, Monitoring for Disparities and Outcomes, as a first read on October 21st. The policy is brought back tonight for approval. Do I have a motion to approve Policy 7-1.6 as presented?
Second?
Ms. Bond and Ms. Purcell, any discussion?
I have one. Oh, go ahead. There was a recommendation that we received for the annual review that takes place to add a representative from the Office of Equity and Diversity. And I looked at the policy that was given to us, and there are several school board office members who are listed, but not that one specifically. And it made sense, given some of the things that we're asking for in that policy, to include that individual in that list. I thought that recommendation made sense to me.
Mrs. Wright leads that policy, and she is actually from the Office of Equity and Diversity. So we could certainly list that in there, but it's her office that's leading.
I see. I see. Okay.
It still needs to be listed to make sure throughout the years, everyone knows this is who's leading that department, that initiative.
I agree.
So we could easily add that in.
Board members, can I get a thumbs up if we're good making that change?
So I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the table right now to add that position to the list that's currently on that we have, so we can pass it this evening. I don't know if there's a second to that.
So the motion was Ms. Bond. So are you, you go with amending your motion to include that change?
I am.
Okay. And Ms. Purcell? Just a second. Okay. Great. Any other comments or discussion?
I just hope that with this new policy, that we are going to do a, I'm just saying, a better job of identifying what's going on with our groups of students and not general, this is what's happening, and this is how we fix it, is to look at what is actually happening within our schools that may be causing the disparities that we are seeing in our discipline now.
Okay, great. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, Glenn Schilkote, our Administrator of Fine Arts, will present the General Music Textbook Adoption as a first read.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the board, Dr. Graham, student representatives. I'm here to present the General Music Textbook Adoption Committee's recommendation to you. I'll begin with an overview of the process, then discuss the recommendation, and end with answering any questions. An initial survey was distributed to general music teachers to identify textbooks of interest for review. On September 2nd, the school board approved the formation of the adoption committee, which began the process of identifying finalists based on those survey results. At the conclusion of the first committee meeting, Quaver Music and Essential Elements Music Classroom were selected as the two finalists. The committee developed two surveys, one to gather teacher feedback and another to collect community and stakeholder input regarding both programs. The results of those surveys are linked in the adoption timeline. Following the collection and review of survey data, the committee reconvened to discuss both finalists in depth and develop a final recommendation to you. After reviewing all teacher, community, and stakeholder feedback, the adoption committee unanimously recommended Quaver Music as the textbook for the MCPS general music curriculum. The committee identified several key factors supporting this recommendation, including strong alignment with the Virginia SOLs, comprehensive and developmentally appropriate instructional resources, ongoing professional development opportunities for teachers, and dual-language functionality and accessibility features. And this one's particularly important because all of the material, they automatically, not using AI, but they translate into Spanish, whether it is originally from a different language or originally in Spanish. They make sure that that material is done with an actual Spanish speaker that does the translations for continuity and fluency. So they're not using, you know, a computer system to make sure that that's happening. So based on these factors, the committee determined that Quaver Music best meets the needs of MCPS students and teachers and provides the strongest overall support for the division's general music programs. The committee members are listed, and then there are quotes, of course, and then the last thing is a list of the divisions that are currently using Quaver. And I can answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Schilkote. School board, any questions or comments?
Thank you for your thorough work in updating these textbooks, which has been a long time coming.
Thank you.
So there's quotes for starting at kindergarten and starting at pre-K. Is there any reason why we wouldn't include pre-K?
Yes. So there's an additional cost with getting the pre-K material. And after looking, when the committee looked at all of the material, you know, there is value into getting the preschool selection. We do have six schools that have preschools, some multiple classes in those schools, and that would be helpful. However, after looking at what other counties are doing, many are using the kindergarten curriculum, and that material is easily transferable to the preschool curriculum. So it would save us a little bit of money in the long run. And the committee felt that that wasn't 100% necessary to get the preschool curriculum. It would be used if purchased, but our recommendation is that that was not necessary. I wanted to be transparent and give all the information. So if we did go with pre-K through, it's technically pre-K through eight, it would be a higher cost. And that's also why there were six years worth of quotes. There's up to a six-year adoption. You don't get a discount on those until year five. And so the most discount, the most significant, is in the five-year without pre-K.
Because we can keep going around. Ms. Franklin? Okay. Dr. Gitry?
Thank you so much. I saw that it was unanimous. I'm not able to access the teacher feedback. The link didn't work, but...
If you, so for some reason, when that was created as a PDF, but on this document that's listed, if you go to the adoption timeline, every link works there.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. I saw that it was unanimous. So, great, thank you.
Ms. Parton?
So Glenn, thank you so much. Again, you're always looking for ways to better our fine arts and musical intuitive, which you and I have talked about, liking to get more of our students engaged. And I did do a little bit of research on Quaver, and I was glad to see that they are a leader in elementary music and the digital and just the whole way it corresponds from that up into the eighth grade. It looks like it's pretty phenomenal, so good job with that and best of luck to you with that.
Thank you. It actually has a lot of really great resources, especially for our guitar classes in middle school. So yeah, it's got a lot of great stuff.
I'm very excited about it.
Ms. Bond?
Thanks again, too, and thanks for the groups that you've been bringing. That just shows the work that you've been putting into this and trickles down to all our schools and them being able to use what you've instituted, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
No other comments from me either? Thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
All right, next up, the proposed 2025-26 Committee of Membership for the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee is presented for the board's review. Megan Atkinson, our Administrator of CTE and Business Partnerships, is available for questions if needed.
So I'm going to ask the same question I've been asking for several years. The representative labor organization, does this person actually represent a labor organization?
Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the board, student representatives, Dr. Graham. Ms. Franklin, thank you for your question. And I adopted a lot of members of the CTE Advisory Committee that have served in the past. that have served in the past. But I did reach out to UA Local 10, which is the Richmond and Roanoke, Virginia Plumbers, Steamfitters, and HVAC Union. So, it serves Richmond and Roanoke. And Steve Martin is an active member. I spoke with Bill Dunn, a local 10 officer. He serves as the Roanoke Business Agent. So, he vetted Steve's participation in the union, and says that he hires union, and is very active in their apprenticeship program. So, I believe he will be, or continue to be, a great addition to our CTE Advisory Committee.
I can't thank you enough, because this is the first time anyone's ever done that in a way that it actually shows this person does represent a labor union. Thank you.
Great, any, any other questions or comments?
I'll just add, I think, thank you so much for putting the committee together. I was very happy to see a student representative. Thank you to that student representative for serving that committee. One of the things I did notice when I was looking at some of the demographic information for our county is we have a growing Hispanic population. We have a pretty good-sized Asian population, and there isn't any representation. I would encourage the administration for these advisory committees to push to have that broad representation. Because oftentimes, we just, we think of an African-American, African-American representative on these committees, but we do have a pretty sizable, so I don't know if you reached out to those communities at all, but it would be great to see some of that broader representation.
Thank you for that feedback. We actually have a balancing act with this advisory committee, so we want to make sure that we are representing our local community. But we also have an obligation to have representation for our federal Perkins Grant. So, you will see that the, the community percentages could be swayed a little bit, just because we have to have business representation, we have to have someone speaking for our homeless population, our labor organization. So, it is a challenge, but I welcome additional participation in the committee.
Is there a cap on the committee? Because I know that some of our advisory committees, there are caps on the numbers. Is that one of the reasons why?
There's not a cap, per se, but everyone that is listed on the advisory committee fills a role that's required for our Perkins Grant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
So, with that said, trying to reach out to these community, other communities, it is possible to still have them on the committee. So, it's just a matter of trying to find them.
I welcome participation in our advisory committee meeting, because it will make us stronger.
Right, okay, thank you.
We can keep going around. Dr. Roundtree?
Thanks for all the work on it, and reaching out to all these key stakeholders in our community, thanks.
Ms. Purcell?
Also, just, yeah, thank you for the work you did to put the committee together. I don't have any questions.
Ms. Bond?
Thank you as well, and I do know some of the names that have been trying in the years past to get involved, and have kind of been frustrated that they didn't seem to get called on, so I appreciate you doing that, and I think it's a good group here.
Ms. Parton?
Thank you as well. I do realize with this committee that you've got to have the representation that you are told here. So, I appreciate you trying to reach out and find that, you know, perfect medium to try to get widespread across the community. I know that can be very difficult, so I appreciate your efforts with all of that, so thank you again.
Great. No questions from me either? I thank you so much for your, for your work on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board? Okay, great, thank you. Sorry. All right. That brings us to, next up, Dr. Tom Brewster. Our Acting Director of Human Resources will present a proposal to revise the salary scale for facilities and transportation positions.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the board, and Dr. Graham. Today, we're presenting a proposal to revise our salary scales for our facilities and transportation positions. Joining me are Dr. Brown, Mr. Walters, Ms. Bland, and Mr. Bennett, who will assist with any questions the boards might have. Objective one focuses on our skilled trades, our HVAC technicians, our electricians, plumbers, and accompanying lead positions. We're proposing adjustments to keep our pay scales competitive with both county and nearby school divisions. We are also integrating professional stipends into pay structure to represent and embed nationally certified and licensing recognitions. Objective two covers transportation. Our second objective addresses transportation, bus drivers and our fleet technicians. We are proposing to increase the starting rate from $23.74 to $25 an hour during this fiscal year of 2026. Two nearby school divisions now already start above the $27 an hour mark, so an increase is essential to remain competitive in the labor market. Our long-term vision. This proposal is the first step towards establishing pay equity across all support staff positions in the future fiscal years. Right now, our focus is on the most immediate needs. These changes are not just about this year, however. They set the foundation for equity and sustainability in the years ahead. So, looking at our facilities salary scales, an overview of our proposed salary ranges for facilities. Currently, skills trade positions range from $39,000 to $73,000. We are proposing the following. Trades one is an entry-level skills worker position, without license, without a journeyman or a master's license. Pay would start at $50,000 and end at $87,675. Our trades two employees, those with journeyman license, the pay would start out at $52,000 and finish up at $91,182. And our trades three positions, which are our master licenses, would start out at $53,000 and end at $92,936. These updated scales reflect experience, training, and professional license. For facilities, the estimate annual cost for these adjustments includes salaries and benefits. It's $200,000 each year, this is a reoccurring expense. For the remainder of the fiscal year of 2026, the cost would be $100,000. With our proposed transportation salary scales, currently, our bus drivers and fleet technicians earn between $23.74 to $37.38 per hour. We are proposing to revise that to $25 an hour to $43.84 per hour. This helps us stay competitive as our neighboring divisions continue to raise their pay rates. With our transportation cost impact for transportation, the estimated annual cost is approximately $400,000, including salaries and benefits. Again, this is a reoccurring cost, and for the remainder of fiscal year 26, the cost would be $200,000. So, our total cost summary, our annual recurring cost for both facility and transportation adjustments would be $600,000. For the remainder of FY '26, combined cost would be $300,000. All of this is fully funded through existing vacancy savings, meaning no additional budget impact. However, there would be a reoccurring cost for the future. Some planning considerations to consider. First, we would have to update our salary schedule for the affected positions. We would have to adjust our FY '26 budget allocation, and we would have to plan for reoccurring costs in future years. Our recommendation tonight is that the board approve these salary scale adjustments with the effective start date of January 1st, 2026. This time allows us to support operational stability while planning responsibility for future budgets. And in conclusion, these salary scale revisions are a strategic starting point to addressing support staff salaries, embeds the professional certifications into the salary structure, addresses our critical need positions, keeps us competitive locally, supports recruitment and retention, and builds a long-term workforce stability. Thank you for hearing from us this evening. Thank you for your continued support for salaries and support staff, and at this time, we'll take any questions that the board might have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Brewster. Board, who has questions? I know one person does.
Okay, so I jumped the gun earlier. Okay, I was just excited. We had just received an email about our carpenters maybe not being included in this group, and I was just kind of wondering, could you give me some information on maybe why that? And I understand, this is a starting point, and you can't include everything, because it could continue out, and continue out, and continue out, well, it wasn't me, or I didn't get it, or, so I understand that. But that's part of this group, so I didn't understand why we were omitting them.
We carefully selected, the three that we selected were all on the same salary schedule. Carpenters are not on the salary schedule, but we did want to address our most immediate needs. For example, HVAC, we have two positions open. One has been open since 2022. So, we did address that, we wanted to address our most immediate needs, but carpenters are on our high-priority list for the budget, for the budget year.
We can go around on this. Ms. Parton?
So, thank you, Dr. Brewster. And I know we heard from a lot of groups tonight, and we need all of them, all of them deserve more money. Again, if I could give it to them now, I would, but I know we've got to start somewhere. So, I am going to assume that we picked this area, and I think you've told us this before, these are our most critical. And so, with that being said, can you tell me what would happen if we didn't do this for these specific positions as compared to maybe some of the more non-critical positions that we could hopefully get to sometime on down into the budget? You know, because we want to, we're going to increase, hopefully, for everyone. But why we, why these now? Can we kind of get some more information as to why we absolutely really need to do these for these people right now?
Certainly. I think it comes down to hiring, particularly with regards to HVAC. And I think it, with plumbers, and bus drivers, and electricians, it comes down to retaining. And if we do, we do anticipate losing employees in the future. And if we're going to rehire those, then we need to act on this. But I think it comes down to retention and being able to attract employees.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes, thank you again for this presentation. I am in favor, but I'd like to go a step further here. Can you go back to the slide that says objective one for me? I want to make sure that I'm reading that slide correctly. Okay, so, the first bar is for Montgomery County employees?
Correct, Montgomery County employees.
Okay, so, are you telling me there's a $20,000 difference?
Yes, according to their pay plan for this current year, it may have been last year, yeah, FY '25, the top salary was around $57,000 for HVAC.
Okay, so you feel confident in this data right here?
Yes.
Okay, I looked at that, and I was like, you've got to be kidding me. You know, we had the battle with the Board of Supervisors, and they clawed back money. I feel a responsibility as a board member to our employees. I look at that, and I find it disgraceful. So, when we have our budget conversation, I would like to see a comparison, to see what it would take to make us competitive with our own county. I don't know about my other board members, but I'd like to see that. If it involves maybe increasing taxes, then that's what we should do, because I think that this is disgraceful. And I know, you know, I'm directing this at you, but I want, I feel a responsibility to our employees, and I'm not happy with that. So, I'm in favor of this, but when we're talking about the budget, I want this addressed.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just, yeah, just to piggyback on that, a couple of years ago, I mean, that's kind of how we got with the grounds, kind of why, because there was so much differential between the county and even the town, and that's kind of, and I said, that's what's happening, is we're jumping, and we need to find a level playing field. So, you're exactly right, and that's one of the reasons that we pushed for that point, because it was so unlevel at that. And we finally got that to where it was, it was more of an even playing field, so...
I'd love to see that analysis across our, all of the positions, to see, okay, what would it take for the county to pay all of its employees as though they're equal, rather than treating MCPS employees as though they are second-class citizens in their own county?
Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
You know, this is my hot topic. So, I'm so glad that we're doing this, but it's still frustrating to me that for years, we have not done it, and that's why we have positions that are open for years, right? So, when we go into this next calendar year, as was stated, we need to put some equity into our employees as far as a livable wage. And these days, that's quite a bit of money, because it takes a lot to live right now. I absolutely agree with the comparison with the county, but the county doesn't also, they don't have PERS. They don't have a nutrition program, and these are also critical positions. Every employee that we have is a critical employee. As Dr. Graham stated earlier, it takes everybody to do this. And we need to do better than what the county's doing, because we have, I think it's probably a three-to-one ratio of employees, they have, what, around 500, 600 employees? And we have thousands. It costs money to run a school district, and the key part of that is our employees. And we have got to do better for all of our employees. And again, because I want to go home tonight sometime, too, but all of our employees are critical employees. And for years, we have not been paying them, because it's, push it back, push it back, well, we just don't have the money right now. And then, we get to a critical point, and in the middle of a year, we're having to do these things, or offer those ridiculous stipends that we put out there, instead of rolling it over into their salaries. So, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, the Board of Supervisors needs to give us money. So, in 14 days, that position will be open for three years, even. Three years? And they have the nerve to not fund us when they're paying the same positions? $10,000 to $20,000 more? We need, we need more charts like this. This is a great chart. For every position that we have, and the county has, we need the comparisons of their salaries, so that we have the ability to present it during the budget season, present it to the Board of Supervisors, present it to the community, so that the community can then show up with the information in force to say, you're not treating people equitably in the school system. You have the authority to tax, and then delegate the running of the schools to the, to the school board. But you treat the employees like second-class citizens, not providing them the appropriate amount of funds when the school board does not have the ability to tax. They should be 100% on board with the, with the, with a change to our state constitution to allow the school board the authority to tax property, so that we can provide for our employees what we need to provide, and they don't have to be held accountable for the fact that they have to tax. They don't have to... They don't have to blame the school board every time that they raise the taxes one cent. Thank you for putting this together.
Ms. Russell?
Thank you, Dr. Brewster. Could you share maybe what the costs might be for the division? If we lose these in-house positions and then have to pay contractors to come in and do repairs for things like plumbing, electrical, and HVAC? Just so that the community has a sense of what that would do to our budget?
I think Dr. Brown has a really good handle on that, so.
Thanks.
And it actually affects our budget now.
So we reached out to a company in the, in the Roanoke Valley to give us an estimate on doing preventative maintenance, which is one of the primary tasks of our HVAC department, just to see what one school would cost to do preventative maintenance in a year. That one school, I believe it was for KIPS, was $72,000 for a year. So if you, and some of our schools are larger, some are smaller. You know, like Blacksburg High School has on average five, 600 filters. So it has more, more items to do. But if you average it out, it would be $1,440,000 to do preventative maintenance on these schools if you, if you went to the, an outside agency. And that's just the labor. That's not the consumables, which we would still be responsible for. So another one is, you know, we've had, we are fully staffed now with plumbers, but there for a while, we only had one plumber. And we had to reach to outside companies to get things taken care of because we didn't have anybody. So we have spent, we've had to utilize them, one, two, three, four, four times to the total of $5,250. So, you know, that adds up. That's just since school started. So these expenses will multiply, you know. One of the examples I give is we had an issue at Eastern Montgomery High School where we had the hot water heater go out. Our, our plumber, our plumber and our lead electrician went down and took care of that. Just the labor alone, if I'd had to reach out to a train or a Southern Air to do that, the labor alone would have been $25,000. So that right there saved us a considerable amount of money. And the quality of work, I mean, I've been doing this for a while now. And the, and the quality and the level of work from that plumber and our Matt Felger, I'll go ahead and give him credit here, and Jamie Warren, the, the level of work and craftsmanship that I witnessed is above or far exceeding what I've seen in the commercial sector. And that goes for all of our tradesmen. They have pride in what they do. They take pride in what they do. And, you know, they want to be here and serve the students and do a good job. So, but that's just some of the examples that I have. It could be very costly to outsource some of this. Now, we do at some time, sometimes we do have to outsource some jobs. We just don't have a choice. It's just too big for what we, what we can handle. But for the, for the little jobs and things like that, they, they do a considerable amount of work. And we're, we're two people down right now, so, in HVAC alone. Thank you.
How much would it add? Or perhaps it is just more appropriate for the budget request to increase benefits for, for bus drivers, maybe to expand to the drivers that... But it's some are six, six hours a day and some are, and not everyone gets benefits, right? I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm just kind of responding to the request from earlier, but.
Sure, I'd be glad to provide some information. A survey was actually sent out to bus drivers to get a feel because we have been struggling to keep enough bus drivers, you know, for all the routes. And based on that survey, in order to provide benefits, what we estimated would be around $250,000 to do that. That would be health benefits. We would have to look at the cost for VRS if that was something that you're interested in as well. If you look at the surrounding counties, I believe we're one of the few that are left that do not offer benefits, healthcare or VRS to our bus drivers. We're one of the last remaining.
Thank you so much.
And then for me, you know, the one question I had, you already answered as part of your presentation, but I wanted to just reemphasize it. So making changes mid-year impacts the budget, right? But in this case, because of cost savings from not having those positions filled, you know, these increases kind of pay for themselves and that's, that's awesome, right? I mean, that's coming from somewhere. But it also helps, helps explain why you're not going any broader than that, right? Because those cost savings are coming from positions that we don't have, right? So, you know, so certainly in terms of the short-term change, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer, right? Like, we can't fill those positions. We gotta do something. You know, just also as, as the board is contemplating this, this is also a long-term impact into next year's budget and beyond, right? So it's, you know, short-term seems like a no-brainer. Long-term, there's an impact, right? So. So tonight was just informational only. I assume this will come back for a vote at the next meeting?
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Just thank you for the information.
Thank you all.
Good, thank you. All right, next up, Dr. Lori Comer, our Director of Secondary Education, will present an update of the work from the GPA Revision Committee.
Good evening again. Tonight, I'm joined by Mr. Dobler, our Administrator of Science, and Mr. Robert Ratcliffe. He is our Director of Technology. Our purpose and sequence, we were asked to revisit our GPA policy and how we calculate our GPAs. So we've looked at that. We've spent some time in committee work. We've presented once on this where we were at that point. We have drafted some possible alternatives to the way we do that. And we wanted to see the impact, how it affected different GPAs. And during that process, we did identify some unintended consequences. So when we look at what GPA is and what weighted GPA is, in CPS, as most divisions do, they grant additional credit or additional weight if a student takes an advanced placement course, if they take a dual enrollment course, or anything approved at an accredited college or university, those approved courses. And we have several of those.
Dr. Comer, I'm sorry. I think you have a little clicker up there. You can kind of advance your slides there if you want.
I apologize.
There you go. Great.
So currently in our schedule, in our policy and how we calculate that, we start by calculating a base GPA, which is a basic, four is an A, three is a B, two is a C, a one is a D. And then that value of 0.03125 is added to that for each passing grade. And the reason for doing that is because it gives the same value for that grade, for that additional AP, DE, no matter how many courses you take. So Mr. Dobler is going to explain why we divide by the number 32.
Good evening. So Dr. Comer asked me if I could explain why we divide by 32. I was the principal at CHS at the time when they changed the system of how the formula was, was changed to get the GPA. I think it was the 18th, 19th school year. So just, just to walk you through, and what we did was, like most school systems, I think, they took the total number of GPA points and divided them by the number of course credits. So if you got an A in an AP course or DE course, you got a five. If you got an A in a regular course that's not weighted, you got a four. Okay, I think most, a lot of school systems do that. So, so if you've got two students, let's imagine you've got student A and student B. All right, we're saying these are the top students or two of the top students. They go through ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade, and they take the exact same courses, okay? Non-weighted and weighted, they take the exact same ones. They make As in everything, so their GPA is the same at that point in time. They go into their 12th grade year, and student A takes... Student A and student B take the exact same seven courses, okay? And student A says, I'm going to go ahead and take choir or the CTE elective, some additional four-point credit course, okay, non-weighted course. Student, that was student A. Student B says, I'm going to take a study hall. I'm not even going to take an additional course. When you divide out the total, and they make As in everything their senior year, when you divide out the total number of GPA points by the total number of course credits, the student with the higher GPA is student B. That's the student that took the, the study hall, right? So to me, the better student, the student that would be worthy of valedictorian, for example, would have been student A because they had a more rigorous schedule overall. So you'll find that students were gaming the system. I mean, they were, they were looking for ways to take study halls. Typically, on a block schedule, they might take one first semester, one second semester. They might take some during earlier years. They would go back, and because they were allowed to, they would go back and expunge classes from middle schools because they were four-point classes. And if they could do anything to lower their denominator, they were going to do it. And valedictorians, I mean, it's highly competitive, right? I mean, sometimes hundreds of a point with, with the term valedictorian, but often wasn't the best student. So I know I expressed concerns because I had experienced situations where students maybe were valedictorian that had, had taken more study halls. Here, and when I was in Floyd, had the same situation. So the committee got together. I was not part of the committee. And they came up with this system that would not be a disincentive for taking non-weighted courses. And that was, any questions I can answer?
Board, any questions? Any questions at this point? I've got a question, but I want to make sure if there's anybody else. Well, so I find this confusing. And so I think it's important to understand the current before we start discussing other options. So I understood what you discussed on Slide 3 there, just about the weighted GPA. But then I don't understand this slide. Like what, like what do we divide in 32?
Okay, that's good.
Where did that come from? It's not explained.
I didn't answer that.
Thanks.
So the, in a typical four-year, ninth grade through 12th grade, most students can take eight courses a year on average, okay? So that's 32 courses over the eight-year period. We know that some students are going to get high school credit in middle school. There might be some students that take an additional course. I mean, just if you're in the robotics program, right, you're going to get an additional course maybe that way. Some people take economics, personal finance over the summer. Anyway, there's ways to get other numbers, right? And that denominator can change. So I think what they decided was, instead of adding a, giving you a five for getting an A in an AP or DE course, they did the base GPA. Whatever courses you took, if you made an A, you got a four on those. For each AP or DE course, you got 1/30 seconds added on to your total GPA. 1/30 seconds is, I don't know, I'm assuming it was already up there, point whatever, something 325 or something. I don't know what it is.
Point 03125.
Point what?
Point 03125.
Point 03125, yes. So basically, if you took nine AP, DE courses, you could have nine 30 seconds would be added on to your GPA. So there was no, let me say, if you took an additional four-point course, it didn't, it didn't hurt you at all. It didn't take your GPA down at all. Thanks, good question.
So basically...
If that helps, I appreciate it.
Basically, if a student, we have to have 22 credits to graduate, and they took 21 unweighted, so they got the 4.0s. But then they took one weighted course, and we gave them a straight five for that. They would have a 4.045. Now, I have an overachieving student that took a total of 35 classes. And they took one weighted GPA course. And then they took one weighted, one, excuse me, and 35 unweighted. So they've got all these extra credits they've taken. Their GPA is going to end up being lower because they took more courses. So what you could potentially have is taking a study hall freshman year. You could take first and second semester. So you could take eight study halls over that course of time and then just take... Or on the inverse, you could take lots of DE, which we encourage students to take those. But that means if we add that 0.3125 to every one of those weighted courses, that means no matter how many courses you take or how few courses you take, you get the same credit extra for that course. It doesn't fluctuate with those calculations. So that was the purpose for why we do what we do. So we decided as a committee to explore some options and look at some different models of how we calculate. Is 32 the best number to calculate? So we looked at some different ways to calculate using some different numbers. And Mr. Ratcliffe will come and share with you weighted courses, how we do it currently versus the proposed, and then a document that we used in our committee.
Good evening, Board. Is there a mouse? Yeah, if we can bring up the first one. So both of these have the same data points in them. I think data is always good to look at it from different angles. And so we're going to look at the same data of, we asked the high school principals to send us some student numbers of some students we can look at. So there's about close to 100 students there that we're going to pull up and look at. And so the high school students sent me their information.
You have to exit a slideshow mode. Hit Escape on your keyboard and then go back. Now try it.
Perfect, thank you. So this first one here, column A has your grade level. Column B is your GPA for the students that we were looking at, with the average being 3.96. Then you have the cumulative weighted points to date was 5.02. That's the average for there, but each one, we kind of broke that up. And then you look at column M. Column M, what the first proposal we were looking at were, was if the student was in eighth grade the previous year. So column A is a current grade that they're in. So if the previous year they were in eighth grade, we divided it by eight. And then in ninth, and then we divide it by 16th if they were in 10th, 24 by in 11th, and then 32 in 12th. Again, since 32 was the end goal, would be eight per grade. And you can see there for like student, let's look at column five or row five. Student that was in 10th grade, they had a four. GPA was a four. So with this proposal, they would have a .19. Column N, what we decided was, well, let's look at it if we did ninth through 11th, if we divide it by 24. Because I think some discussions was around the 11th grade year when they're applying for colleges and, and other, other things around that time. So that gave that student a .13. It's a little lower because that student was in a grade before where they were getting, not dividing by the 24, we were dividing by 16. So that kind of gave some false GPA with that. So, that kinda gave some false GPA with that. And then, if you look at the column O, same student that we're looking at, that gives them the current bump in their GPA of point-oh-nine. So, there, there's a little difference there, and you can see that their averages are at the top, and if we go to the next one, it's a little easier to understand, because you actually see the impact on the GPA. So, same thing here, same students. You'll see that, if you can scroll up a little bit, so I can know my headers, thank you. So, you'll have the current grades still, the total AP courses they took, their current GPA, and then if we divide it by twenty-four, that's their new GPA. And then, that's the column H and I, and then column K is if we divide it by sixteenth for those students that were in the ninth grade, or the 10th grade, sorry, the 10th grade before that, and then that top one in, in, they were in ninth grade for that GPA, so you can see the difference there. So, again, if you look at, let's look at column or, or row four there, the student had a GPA of four, that's with it being divided by thirty-two. If we divide it by twenty-four, it goes up to point-oh-four, divide it by sixteen, it goes to four-point-one-zero. Again, it does change the GPA, but if that student, the, the thing that we discussed is if that student, they took no more weighted courses, and they continue to get four-point, as they continue to get As all across the board, in 12th grade, their GPA is gonna drop, because we do divide it by thirty-two at the end. So, any questions on the data? The other thing I wanna point out is, it does show that the difference, the average difference was point-oh-five if we divided by twenty-four. Again, we were looking at that kinda as the model, because 11th grade i, is where we start applying for colleges, so. Any questions I can help answer?
Let me go back to the presentation.
So, with all of that work, as we discussed as a committee, as I mentioned last time, many colleges and universities, they strip the GPA down, they look at strength of schedule, we look at different systems across the division, across the state, across the country, they, everybody has their own way of doing that. Our counselors on our committee, they agreed that most of our scholarships look for a range, and they typically also look at strength of schedule. The differences are small. The committee felt like it was important to have well-rounded students with advanced courses, but also have the opportunity to take some non-weighted courses, such as some of our fine arts and some of our CTE. The most unintended outcome we saw with this entire process was when a parent on the committee brought up to us that many times, our students, and especially our high-achieving students, put so much pressure on themselves to do well, that if we start by some of the proposed way we look at that, that GPA could appear to be inflated earlier, and then could appear to decline if we, looking at the divisor that we divide by. And for some of our students, that could be detrimental to see a GPA decline. We did have a good suggestion come out of this committee, that we felt like, as a whole, maybe our students and our parents needed better education on the process, and maybe that's something we could do when we do academic career planning nights, or get that word out to families, and educate, how are we really calculating this, so that folks really understand? Because we want our students to really understand the process, and our parents too. MCPA, MCPS no longer uses the valedictorian salutatorian. We heard a couple of big sighs of relief from some middle school families that was on that committee, because they weren't aware of that, and they were relieved to hear that that pressure was not gonna be on those students. So, when that was changed several years ago, thank the Board at that time for doing that, because I think that's been beneficial. Instead, MCPS does recognize their honor graduates by distinguished scholar, scholar, and honor graduate, because those students' hard work definitely needs to be recognized in some way, and we do. And then, our students, many of them earn different seals for their diplomas when they graduate, which is so important. So, that, this particular committee, after much consideration, they did vote to recommend that we keep the current method. So, that was the committee recommendation, and we are here to answer any remaining questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you for taking some time to explore in, to more detail, help explain some of that, it was great. School Board, who has questions?
So, I definitely have questions, but before I ask my questions, I know that we have some very accomplished competitive students right here, who have stayed, I think, a little later than they normally would have, in order to, to give us some perspective. So, if it's, if it's possible, if it's okay, I think it'd be great to hear from you guys.
Hey, thank you for the presentation. And I, I heard like, you're dividing each year by a different number, so, do summer classes, like, impact that at all?
It, well, right now, they're dividing by thirty-two.
Yeah.
One of the proposed models that we looked at was dividing by eight at the end of the freshman year, and then by sixteen, then by twenty-four, and then by thirty-two. That was one of our proposed models. The summer work would go into the following year.
Okay, oh, yeah.
That's a great question.
So, the current model gives us like, the highest GPA, or what would look best on like, a college application at the time of junior, more than, like, senior year?
It's very small. Mr. Ratcliffe, do you want to respond to that, because you, we can go back to your slide where you could see that?
You want the first one or the second?
Let's go to the second one, if we can do that. So, yeah, the, the average difference was about point-oh-five, so, if you divide by thirty-two, it gave you what would be best at the end of that senior year. As you can see here, we'll, we'll pull up, let's look at row fourteen here, it's a 12th grade student, the current model of their, their GPA is a four-point-two-two, so that's divided by thirty-two. If we were to divide by twenty-four, which would be at the end of their 11th grade, it would be a four-point-two-nine. So, a, a very small change, but if this, again, if the student didn't take any other weighted classes, then that GPA is, if, is gonna go back down if we were to divide it by twenty-four, their 11th grade year.
Thank you.
Great, awesome. School Board members, who wants to start?
I'll start. Yeah, so, a clean answer is your 11th grade year, with the current model versus the eight, sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-two, your GPA, that junior year, when you're starting to apply for college, is going to be lower. If you're, if you're already doing a lot of AP classes, presumably, you'll continue doing that in your senior year as well. Additionally, while colleges may look at, colleges for scholarships, admittance, may look at the whole body of work, we also have very high-achieving students that apply to laboratory internships, university opportunities, academic camps, and so forth, in their earlier years. I don't know how much has been looked at that, to see how much those review committees look at the whole body of the student versus a transcript GPA as a top-line item, because being able to go to a, a space camp where you're getting, you're getting experience with NASA, and you plan on going into aerospace, being able to have that GPA your sophomore year for t, for four AP classes, have a point-two-five increase instead of a point-one-two-five increase, is a big difference, because as we said, hundreds of a point matter.
The committee looked at, Mrs. Botino's, our gifted resource administrator, did serve on this committee, and she pulled some of the most common commi, camps and things that she works with, and through our governor's school and things to look at. So, we did look at those.
You have a report on them, or?
Many of them.
They're not looking at GPA? They, they don't com?
She stated that many of them looked at ranges, or anything above a certain amount, like a three-eight-five, or, and she gave some samples of that.
And when they have students that are comparable, how do they break ties?
She did not comment on that.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know, it's a... I don't understand why, at the various points in a, in a student's education, we wouldn't give them the highest possibility, the highest GPA available to them, in order to compete with the rest of the country, but that's, that's my opinion. There's six more of us.
We're going around. Ms. Franklin. Dr. Getre.
Okay, so, I, I wanna make sure I understand this. So, one of the reasons, one of the main reasons why we use this system is because of study halls? That students are taking study halls? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
That is one of the reasons. The other reason was so that every AP or DE course that a student took was weighted equally, no matter how many other unweighted courses you took.
They are and they're not, in that the, it's a, it's a set percentage, but it's based on the final number of credits that a student would be taking, so that, I mean, things got muddied a little bit, the thirty-two is at the end of their senior year, correct?
Under the current model, yes.
Right, so, the GPA isn't actually accurate, if the, if what you're trying to do is to weight an AP or DE course one additional credit, correct? So, if, okay, so, the goal here with this formula is to account for that bump of one point if they get an A in AP/DE course, correct?
Yes, they do get a weighted credit.
Okay, so, that's the goal, that's the reason why we have this system in place. In order to actually achieve that, they have to get to the end of their senior year where one thirty-second is the, that bump across all their credits, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, you're disadvantaging students until they get to a point where it really doesn't matter for scholarships or for admissions. So, I mean, for me, this just is, this doesn't make sense to me. It really doesn't make any sense to me. So, be, so I talk to AP students, I know AP students, they're ambitious, they're driven, they wanna get into schoo, good schools, so I...
They are, they are very.
They're really, and, you know, the cost, so I, I talked to a fa, a mom, four kids through MCPS, one's at Cornell, another's at Virginia Tech, two are still students, and the price tag for Cornell is ninety-five thousand, that's the, the sticker price. The student who went through MCPS and is at Virginia Tech came in with ninety-one credits. Do you know how many, how much money that family has saved? That's a lot of money. So, I just looked, I got some, the BHS, there are over fifteen-hundred AP exams that were given. This year, I got the figure, it was eighteen-hundred registered for exams. People are taking AP classes for a number of reasons, but one is because, not only does it give them advantage in admissions, but also because it saves money. And so, for me, I was like, I don't understand why we wouldn't want them to be the most competitive they can possibly be. And I understand that there are ranges that are used in certain, in a lot of circumstances, but, so one of the things that I did was like, you know, I'm just gonna reach out to the admissions office at Virginia Tech, and be like, okay, so, A, is there a cutoff point? Yes, there's an eligibility, you have to have a three-point-five in order to be eligible for onsite, for the onsite program, application program. So, that's a cut point, that's precise, three-point-five. Now, if a student sees that, it's like, oh, man, I have a three-point-four-nine, I'm not eligible. That one-tenth makes a difference, right? It could make a difference.
It could for that student.
Right, right, so, it doesn't make any sense why we would want to not give that student the best chance of getting into the program that they wanna get into. So, it, things got muddied a little bit, for, for me, it's crystal clear, give them the credit. And so, if that means, I think it should be based on the number of credits that they've taken. If they've taken one AP course, whether they've taken ten, whether they've taken twenty AP classes, courses, as soon as I know, they're not just gonna take a fine arts class, because their GPA is slightly misconstrued, I don't see that as an incentive. So, I, this doesn't make sense to me.
Ms. Pardon?
Okay, so, I was on the Board for the first time when all of this came down, and from what I remember, if I'm thinking correctly, one of the main reasons we decided to go this route was because we were seeing an exponential amount of students competing with each other, which was causing apparently some major issues inside the school. So, that issue was brought to us. And then, we've had declining fine arts classes, as well as CTE courses, due to that as well. And it's not that these, these kids probably wouldn't like to take one of those classes, but, you know, we've got teachers here working their butts off, trying to, to get these kids interested in taking these courses, and I am starting to see a growth in that, just because I was here from the time this started. I don't know if that's the possibility, the part of the reason, maybe. However, I do see, I do see the flip side of someone who knows what they wanna do, know where they wanna go, knows what they wanna be, and they need to have this. So, do we have any idea of how many students that we're looking at, potentially roundabout number, possibly, that would comparable to the whole, our whole student body? Because we're here to take care of everybody, and I just want to make sure that we think about any repercussions that would happen with all of our other student body with that as well, and maybe are, there are some things we can put in place to help these students reach that goal, possibly, with that GPA? I don't know, I'm just throwing things out. Do, do we know how many students we're looking at that would majorly be affected by not, not selecting a valedictorian or a salutatorian, or for their GPA to be a certain, a certain number? And the reason I say this is because my daughter took those AP courses, but she also, she also took other courses that she was interested in, and, and things that she, you know, she wanted to do. We applied for scholarships for the last few years, scholarships among scholarships among scholarships. I made that girl sit down and write, she wrote, she wrote, she wrote essays, but the majority of them that I saw, and I know there's different ones, you're correct, the GPA is usually a, a range, or it's more of a average-to-good range to get the scholarship, but there was so much more to it. Average to good range to get the scholarship, but there was so much more to it than just that GPA. It was, you had to write about an event. You had to write an essay about a certain subject. Tell me, you know, tell me. There was like four or five other steps with that GPA. Yeah, so I'm trying to figure out a good happy median maybe because from what I've seen with what we've done, it seems to be. Working from what I could tell from most of our students, but I do realize that there are other students who. Um, you know, want to excel and want to get to their highest potential. So I don't know how many, do we have an idea of how many students we might be looking at with, with that possibly?
With the charts we have, this is not inclusive of all of our students. It was a sampling of different students.
Mister Ratcliffe, do you know how many um, students, did you run that for the whole, all of our students? Or did we just run that for a sampling?
So we would have to run that data separately. We'd have to run it for everyone.
It would be kind of interesting to see how many were looking at that specifically compared to. The, you know, the seniors or upperclassmen or whatever you want to compare it to as a whole, I think. Thank you. That was a lot of work. Thank you for the presentation.
Um, I just had a question. How does, uh, cause I know when we were talking about that and, and I think it went and dove into deeper. Parents were even getting involved on how to set up schedules so their child could. Move ahead those extra points. I mean, it was a lot of things happening like that, but. How does it work um, with this with dual enrollment as well? Because I know. When my kids were in school or children, it was, it, that was a big conversation piece. If you. Were in AP courses, it was this. If you did dual enrollment, it was this and. You know, if you did AP, you had to do this, but if you did dual enrollment, you got this, but you didn't have to do that and you didn't have to test out and. Um, that was another big factor and a lot of, a lot of students were moving toward dual enrollment. Who again was a, you know, cost savings kind of thing because that did move toward college. That's right, credits. So as long as the colleges were accepting those certain credits and there were some issues with that kind of thing as well. So I think. When all the dice fall, there's issues with, with every type walk of.
Several of their classes are listed as AP slash DE. So they're, they're both. Um, and the weighted credit is awarded to. Uh, any dual enrolled that's from an accredited college or university.
Miss Russell.
Uh, it says in the, in the presentation on slide six, I believe that most colleges and universities. Strip the GPA and look at strength of schedule, so they want to see the unweighted GPA anyway. Is that. Universities in Virginia, was that like, what does that encompass? What does most mean?
Different ones. I mean, the committee looked at, at various different colleges and universities. Um, I would have to go back and pull the list of, of everyone that was looked at. So it varied, you know, and it's because many schools are, are looking at. Potential students from different parts of the country, different parts of the world. And they have to look at where they're all coming from. So that's the reason why.
It would be a little helpful, I think, for our decision-making processes to kind of know, is it. What do Radford and Virginia Tech look for or just universities across, uh, state universities across Virginia, something like that because that's um.
Would you like that just within the state of Virginia?
That would be, that would be great. Um, I am inclined to go with the recommendation of. Of the committee. Um. I understand some of the. The arguments being presented here. But when you think about what we're trying to, to do when we educate our students. Things that I hear, things that I experience in my, in my work life, we want people who are resilient. Who can come back from, you know, adversity and setbacks. And um, some of the discussion about like playing this points game and figuring out how to. Get up here and get up there. That does not help you solve a problem when you are faced with a real problem. Someone who has gotten straight A's all through school and becomes a doctor. Someday you get a patient that you can't help. How do you deal with that if you haven't like. Overcome some other stuff. And I don't think we set our students up successfully if we kind of. Have this, have this game that they, that they can play. Um, and that things are, are then unweighted rigor of schedule. Um, extracurriculars that makes someone a, a whole well-rounded person that. That is the, the thing that's important. It's very subjective. It's very hard to measure. It's hard to stand out in a big pool of people.
I appreciate your perspective on that. If I could share one more thing. Today, um, during our principals meeting, Mister Chilco was going over some goals. Um, with our principals about how he wanted to promote the fine arts more. And he had a very interesting data statistical report in there. About students that are involved in fine arts, how it helps to reduce chronic absenteeism. Among those students. And I have copies of that report if anyone would like them. Um, and that is in the state of Virginia of how students that are involved because. When we looked at, if you remember when we talked a lot about the five Cs in Virginia and we think about. Um, you, you had a great perspective there of becoming a physician. How do you help that patient? And when we look at students that belong to a team, are part of a group. How they collaboratively work and we know that collaboration is a skill. That is needed in most every field now. We know that communication is key in every field. So sometimes it's those things we don't always measure on paper, but that are crucial to life. So, um, I, I thanked Mister Chilco today for that particular report he brought to attention because it was just. Eye-opening to see that and, and to see how. And chronic absenteeism is something that we battle in this county, especially on the secondary level. We do fairly well with it in the elementary, but when we see our students get to secondary schools. That's where we start to see more truancy issues and we start to see our students um, maybe become disinterested. Disconnected from a school.
Well, and, and I could say if you probably, and I can't speak for all, but. If you speak with a lot of the business owners and people that are higher up in business, they will tell you. That the thing that they look for in their employees, the young employees, graduates, college graduates. Our life skills, being on time, things like that, more so than where they graduated from. What, and, and those may be important, but nine out of ten will say it's about learning how to communicate. Knowing how to, to talk to people, being on time, being, being um, dedicated. Those are the things that. That I hear from my business owner colleagues. That's what they're talking about continuously.
Yeah, I guess for me. I wasn't necessarily a. This wasn't a, a critical issue to me. I know it kind of came up some of the, the conversation, but yeah, I definitely appreciate. The work that went into putting all this information together, especially. Um, Mister Radcliffe and putting together the, the spreadsheets. I think we should look at more spreadsheets. That's, that's awesome. We should, we should do a lot more of that. That's fun. Um, and uh, yeah, especially at ten o'clock at night. That's awesome. But um. But I mean, I guess like for, the GPAs aren't like, aren't like, like done in a vacuum, right? Like they mean something and like. Is there no, are there no more kind of common models for doing this that? Did we make this thing up on our own? Is that, is that kind of what I took?
Created for Montgomery County, the current model. We did check with many other school divisions within the Commonwealth. And we checked with local ones all around us, you know, neighboring communities. Uh, we also checked with some bigger school divisions such as Fairfax, uh, Loudon. And we saw that basically they do a straight five for an A. Um, a four for a B for weighted credits and divide by the total number of credits. Um, if you have twenty-two credits, it's divided by twenty-two. If you have um, thirty-five credits, it's divided by thirty-five. So that's, that is what we saw in most.
Got it. I, I guess that kind of gets to the heart. I mean, again, it isn't a. A critical issue for me necessarily, but I don't know why we would choose. A model that disadvantages our students in comparison to some of these other counties, right? Like, you know, you're not necessarily competing anymore. For valedictorian, salutatorian, because we took that away and that, that's, that's cool. I dig that, but they are still competing with students from other counties. For, for places in colleges that, that do care about those GPAs. I know as an employer. Obviously, I'm, I'm looking at, at college students, right? But we start with GPA, right? It matters. And then all those other things, those experiences. And their internships and their clubs and all their stuff, right? But the GPA matters, right? Like, like we don't. Consider certain students for employment if their GPA isn't up to a certain level, right? So, I mean, I, I just feel like. I don't know why we would go a direction that disadvantages our students. So I appreciate the committee's work and I'm not inclined to necessarily go, go against them, but I'm, I'm, I just. I don't get it.
Do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. I can go back in our order if that works. Um, so just a couple of notes too, uh, on the. In the spreadsheet that starts GPA calculation, um, there's the average difference. Divided by twenty-four GPA. So the only proposed method was. That padded, divided by twenty-four only, was that it would be divided by twenty-four until eleventh grade. And then thirty-two at twelfth grade. So the differences in the twelfth grade. Shouldn't be there because it should be back to being divided by thirty-two. It's, it's not a. It's not applicable to, to divide twen- the grades by twenty-four for the twelfth grade students. So, so that's their current grade level. So that, the GPA is from their eleventh grade. Okay, so that's up to their, that's not at the end of their twelfth grade. Yeah, because we don't have their GPA currently. I did not include any, because that's fluctuating with their grades. And I. Uh, Doctor Getre, I may, I may have a little bit of a difference in opinion on this one. I do actually like the, the adding. A value to the GPA rather than divider, divider by the whole body of work. For the reason that you have students that start in. Seventh grade or sixth grade with algebra and if they, if that student. Then has the same number of credits that count as a five as somebody else. That dividend is much larger because they have math cr- math classes, three or four math classes in middle school. That go into that divider. Um, and we shouldn't have, we shouldn't be forcing kids to play games by dropping their credit from middle school. In order to, to increase their GPA for their, their college credits. Um, with the, with the divide by eight for freshmen. Divide by sixteen for sophomores, divide by twenty-four for juniors, divide by thirty-two. For seniors. At the end of a senior year, that student has the same GPA in both cases. Because at the end, it's divide by thirty-two. The difference is in the junior year. It's a divide by twenty-four instead of thirty-two, which is representative of the standard number of classes. That a junior would have at the end of their junior year. At the end of the sophomore year, you would, a standard sophomore would have sixteen classes. So you would divide that extra point by sixteen. So that at any point in their education. They are, they have the highest GPA that's possible on a five-point scale that we're using. To not cause those students a deficit by having many more classes than thirty-two. The just divide by thirty-two as a whole puts our freshmen, sophomore, juniors, seniors at a disadvantage. Because that dividend is the whole body of high school rather than just what they've done up until that point. And at any point in time, as students, if a student's making Bs or making As in. Their freshman year and a B sophomore year and whatnot, as you go on, your GPA is gonna drop. If you're taking classes that have a maximum credit in a GPA scale of four or a five and you. Stop taking those and take four, then yeah, your GPA is gonna drop and students know that. Uh, there's, there are electives. It's, it's a choice from students. They should remain well-rounded. I, I don't know if any students are actually taking, maybe y'all know. Is any, is anybody taking eight AP courses or dual enrollment courses in a year?
At Christiansburg, that's kind of only possible if you go to governor's school, so you can take the dual enrollment classes.
If you scroll down to the bottom, sorry for interrupting, you'll see there is a student there, I think, that has like ten. That has ten that they're taking in one year? Not in one year, but overall. Right, yeah, the question was in one year. Because it, it, the number of AP classes that you're taking, a lot of them, your histories, your math. You're taking a math, you're taking a history anyway, that AP class is in replacement. Of the math or history. It's not in replacement of band. Yeah, so yeah, that, that last student um, had twelve total, so. Just want, we wanted to have that. We wanted to show you, I mean, there's an average there, but there's also outliers. So that's good to look at those students as well, those students who are taking the bigger number.
You guys started off down there. Do you have any other, any other comments having heard this discussion so far? It's fine if you don't, just want to make sure your voices are.
I got one. Um, just like a school here really local, Virginia Tech. Um, asked for GPA and they asked for it on a weighted or unweighted scale. They also, you have to self-enter, like hand type every single AP or DE. Or high school course that you've ever taken. So I think as a school, it's starting to strip out GPA. Because they understand that as foreign people come in, they're gonna have a different GPA grading scale. Every high school and county has a different GPA grading scale. So they're starting to look more at your academic rigor. So this. Number at least to Virginia Tech is starting to decline in like value, but to other schools out of state, I'm sure it still holds a higher value.
Yeah, and to that, to that point, the thing that really matters with that is that pre-college applications to other things with. Scott, early scholarship programs, getting to go to a university in your junior year during the summertime to be able to do some research with a professor and things like that. Um, those, those were, were artificially deflating y'all's GPA currently.
How many DE or AP classes would a student take in their freshman or sophomore year?
That could vary. Um, they don't take a lot typically. But you know, you may have an advanced student that's already got several math courses out of the way.
Come to the mic for us, I'm sorry.
You could potentially have um some advanced math students that had some classes out of the way in middle school that would be uh taking some of that. It's not a lot in those younger grades. Um, it, it does pick up in the higher grades as we get. They have more room in their schedule for that.
It's line three to thirteen in your current spreadsheet. So in, as a, the, there is a sophomore that as a freshman took two and then soft, juniors as sophomores took three, three, four, three, three, four, three, six, three, two, so.
So you can see those numbers are considerably lower and, and those.
Dr. Gietry?
Okay, so I, I, I reached out to the admissions office at Virginia Tech. And I asked them the two questions. One was the cut point for the eligibility and they confirmed, you know, three point five. I asked them, do you recalculate the GPA? And they said, no. They're using the GPA that's reported by the local schools for the onsite application. So just to answer that question, that's what I was told. So I don't know if you reached out to the admissions office here at Virginia Tech, because we, there, there, what were there?
I think someone on the committee did. Cyrus, you said, had you submitted your, and you had to type in your courses and the grade, whether it was weighted or unweighted.
Each class, we have to report whether it was weighted or unweighted.
So they're looking at it that way.
I mean, I know that they're reporting, but I'm telling you that the admissions office said we do not recalculate the GPA. They rely upon the GPA that's reported by the schools.
And one thing, we, we did kind of discuss that kind of cutoff, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and so if you divide it by twenty-four and say that student gets over that cutoff, they take no more extra classes in their senior year, but their GPA stays the same. So then it goes divided by thirty-two, so it goes, now goes below the three point five. So the ca- they thought they were going to end in college and now they're not. So that was one thing we did discuss.
They're not when they get to the thirty-two.
Correct.
But at that point, they've already been accepted or denied, right?
Not always. Sometimes that college, if they're close to that cutoff, will ask them to send a final GPA.
Okay. So there, I just wanted to ask an analytical question here. So there are arguments that are being made that that this method for calculating the GPA is leading to more students taking some of the other courses like fine arts. Can you back that up with any data? How many students are taking fine arts because of thi- not, I'm not saying how many are taking fine arts, but how many are taking them because of this method?
Mr. Chalkode, I believe, has some data on that.
So, well, uh, Tosh has a, a chart that I'm going to show you. And this is basically just the percentages of students that participate in fine arts courses across the division.
Yeah, that, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking the specific question of how many students are taking fine arts courses because of our unusual method of calculating GPA.
So I was answering it the opposite way. How many students that are not taking fine arts courses because of, of playing the game to get, you know, specific points? The, the state average for fine art, fine arts participation is about thirty-eight percent. Um, if you look at the total precipi- or perc- uh, participation, excuse me, for our high schools, we're below average in every area except Christiansburg High School. We would expect that Blacksburg and Christiansburg would be very similar, but we noticed that students are choosing that AP DE route at a, at a more higher rate, of course, uh, which is causing them to have to make tough decisions and then not choose a band class essentially sometimes.
But are they doing it because of the way we're calculating the GPA? Or is it because they're taking AP classes? Or there's a conflation here that I, I not, I'm just respectfully, there's a conflation here because I don't think I know students are taking AP classes. They're not taking fine arts because of the GPA calculation. So I want evidence from you to support the assertion.
Makes perfect sense. So I don't think it's many. I don't think it's affecting many.
Yeah.
Um, when I was the principal, there were absolutely positively students that did not take courses that they were interested in and wanted to take because it would hurt their GPA. Hundred percent. We're talking five kids at CHS. Probably a similar number at the other schools. Very small numbers, the people who are competing at the very top for valedictorian, salutatorian. And like you said, they don't have that anymore to, to be an issue, or one of you said that earlier, but we're talking about small numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the reason I'm-
Sometimes they would take the study hall and be like, I'm going to take it in choir.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, uh, just to highlight one of your points there. An AP test, as was reported the other day, is a hundred dollars. That is the cheapest three credits you can get for a college possible. You can't do that at New River.
That's why so many students are taking AP courses because it's saving families tens of thousands of dollars. That's why they're doing it. They're not like this whole idea that they're just manipulating their GPA. We don't have the valedictorian anymore. So my argument here is why do you not credit them with the most that they can get in order to be the most competitive students, applicants they can be at anything? Why not? Can you give me a reason why you would not then want them to be the most competitive they can possibly be?
We want all of our students to succeed. We want them all to be competitive. I brought you forth the recommendation of our committee.
Yeah, at the end of the day, divide that, divide by thirty-two versus divide by eight freshman year, divide by sixteen, divide by twenty-four, divide by thirty-two. It's the same GPA at the end of the senior year. All it does is provide those students with the ability to compete for opportunities before college com- competitions. Going to, going to these academic camps, going to these national laboratory camps, getting research opportunities with professors and so forth.
I guess I'd just say, just to kind of wrap us up here so we can move on, you know, we, we can argue all night about what the right way is, right? I mean, I think to Ms. Purcell's point, you know, the end of the day, what matters is how these GPAs are used, right? Because as you noted, they're, they're all over the place, right? So I think if we could get some data points, you know, for, for more than just tech, right? You know, Radford, maybe some other, you know, college universities within the state, just to, just to get some more empirical data, like do they, do they decompose these things and ignore the weights and look at stuff? Like that would be helpful, right?
Would y'all like for me to get that to Dr. Graham to email to you?
Please. I think that'd be a good, a good next step.
All right, I'm happy to do so.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys. All right, that was lively. All right, let's um. Does anybody need a quick break before we try to power through? Oh, yeah, all right. So next up, uh, Dr. Mander Widener, our interim assistant superintendent, will provide information on student academic performance data from the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Good evening, board members. Chair Hudson, Dr. Graham, um, Dr. Ann Mitchell and Dr. Lori Comer will be joining me tonight to present an overview of student academic achievement and performance data for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, last year. Typically, this is information that we would have presented to you earlier this semester because this report would usually include information on state accreditation and accountability outcomes. However, at this time, the VDOE has not yet released those results. As you may recall, last year, we introduced, or the state introduced, um, a new framework, the School Performance and Support Framework, which looks at a variety of components and aligns our prior state accreditation and federal accountability systems. So we are still waiting on the results of those reports that will give us that final information on our state accreditation and our federal accountability. So what I'm going to share with you tonight is just data that is related to um SOL raw pass scores. Some data related to chronic absenteeism and things that are factored into that framework, but it's not going to give you that complete picture. So my understanding is that the state has currently contracted with a outside third party in their efforts to validate all those calculations. Hopefully, those, those results and those reports will be available in the upcoming weeks. Um, and they will be published and at that point, um, you know, we'll, we'll share that information. So this report is not a, a, a complete reporting on our, our academic achievement, um, our status, but hopefully it gives you a picture that can kind of show progress and trends in different academic areas that we look at. And we certainly use this data as we work with our schools to um develop their continuous school support plans and set their goals for the year. So just to kind of cover the objectives, because we do have a lot of information in this presentation. So again, we're going to look at SOL performance scores across content areas. Again, this is raw data, Ross pass rates, and that information is published. It is on the Virginia School Quality Profiles website. In looking at that data, you'll get to see some trends over time and also comparisons to um performance across the state. We will also um break it down and look at different subgroups, which is required for that federal accountability. It's also an important piece of the equity work that we do. Dr. Comer and Dr. Mitchell will share some of the things that we're doing um to address areas where we're looking to approve. And then I'll share a little bit more information about that new accountability system and the school performance framework. Again, we're, we're still waiting on the outcomes of that information. All right, so we're going to start by looking at um student performance in key content areas. And the following slides um look at all student groups. So just keep in mind, we're looking at all students across all levels on these slides. So we'll begin with reading. An overall reading performance across the school division, you can see over the past several years, it's remained fairly consistent. So we have a pass rate of seventy-six last year, which is a little bit above the state average. And you know, with reading, this is an important factor that does determine um mastery and growth, which are two of those components that are part of that um performance framework. The next slide shows our performance over the years and also compared to the state for all of our students in math. So again, you can see in math, we've remained fairly consistent, going up a little bit last year and again staying above that state average. And again, math is one of the required areas that we look at. Math looks at not just mastery, but also growth. All right, the next slide looks at science results. So we've seen some improvement in our, in our science performance. Science is factored in determining mastery, but not growth. So again, you can kind of see that comparison over time and also our comparison to the state average. And we are, we were well above the state average last year. All right, writing is a content area that is not factored into that performance framework anymore, but writing is an essential and it certainly is an important skill that we measure through SOL assessments in eighth grade and in eleventh grade. This is the content area where we have seen the most struggles and it is the one content area where you will see, while we've made some improvement, we do, we do, um, we are well below the state average. So one of our division goals is to enhance writing across all subject areas. And that's really being reflected this year in the work that our principals are doing in their school improvement plans. All right, there are our results for all students in history and under the revised um standards of accreditation, this is an area that is no longer a factor in determining a school's accreditation rating. However, history is a key subject. It's an important subject and it is a subject that is assessed by SOLs. So again, I just wanted to point out our performance there and this is an area where we are above the state average. All right, so that covers some of our academic content areas. I also want to give you some data related to other areas. And again, these are areas that are factored into what we call readiness in that framework that is looked at across all areas. So this is our chronic absenteeism. So students who are absent for ten percent or more of the school year are considered to be chronically absent. And that's regardless of whether those absences are excused or unexcused. So the good news here is our chronic absenteeism rates are continuing to go down. This is an area we, we want to see the number go down. So we are making improvements and I think that's largely due to a, a lot of really purposeful intentional work that our staff are doing to um, whether it's through phone calls or letters and contacts with families to engage students more and to increase our chronic, to, to reduce our chronic absenteeism so that we improve students attendance rates. There it is, broken down by levels and you can see S's goal is for all schools to get to a level of ten percent or lower. So at our elementary schools, we are achieving that in some areas. Um, and then it, 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 it goes up as we move into middle and high school. I'll also share with you on-time graduation rates. That is a component that is required um for determining um the performance category for our high schools, which makes sense. So again, we've been fairly steady here. You can see a breakdown of our four high schools, their on-time graduation rates. And then on the next slide, you can kind of see that comparison. We don't have the state average yet for last year, but you can see where we've been steady and where we have been above the state average uh for the past several years. All right, so that kind of looks at our, all of our groups. Again, that, that's related to um our academic performance. The next slides are going to break it down by looking at specific student groups. And again, we're required to look at this information. These are groups that are required for federal accountability. But again, we don't just look at this information for that purpose. I think this is largely tied to our work with equity, making sure that we're really looking at all of our students, looking at the success and the needs of all of our groups and where we need to do work in terms of addressing achievement gaps. Because as you'll see, we, we do have those achievement gaps. So the two areas we're going to look at here, reading first and then math. So if we look at our, our, our reading for our student subgroups, you can see this is a comparison of all of our subgroups. And when you look at this data, and again, when I pulled up reading for all students, it said that pass rate was seventy-six percent. So when you look at our different student groups, you can see that many of them are well below that seventy-six percent, meaning that we have um achievement gaps. So on this, we've got an achievement gap for our black students, our multiple race students, our Hispanic students, our students with disabilities, that's where our biggest achievement gaps are, our economically advantaged students and our English learners. So again, because of this, this is going to drive our focus on making sure that we're looking at data frequently and we're using that data to drive our instruction, but also to implement interventions and remediation that focus on closing those achievement back gaps and improving those reading skills. I'll just quickly go through the next slides, again, show you each of those student groups individually. So here you can see some comparisons over time, how they've performed over time, but then you can also see comparisons to how these groups are performing um compared to the state. So our Asian students have been fairly consistent, again, performing above Asian students across the state. Our black students have been below the state average, but we have seen some improvement in, last year in their performance. Multiple race students, they've been steady, but again, not, not as high as the state. Our Hispanic students have performed above the state level for this group and have been fairly stable and consistent. We'd like to see more, some, more improvement there. Our white students are performing below the state, the white students across the state, and again, have been fairly consistent, stable. Our students with disabilities, again, I've already pointed out, this is where we have our largest achievement gap. Um, and they are, and they are not on par with students with disabilities across the state. Our economically disadvantaged students, slightly behind the state. And then our English learners um above the state, but again, there's a significant achievement gap there. So that's a breakdown of our student groups in the areas of reading. All right, we'll move on and look at math performance for these same student groups. So this first slide just compares all the groups. Um, and, and again, this, this looks at information um from the last three years. So again, just as in reading, um, again, the all-student pass rate in math was seventy-seven percent. So when you look at that and look at these numbers, you'll see that we have achievement gaps for many of these groups, including our black students, our multiple race students, our Hispanic students, our students with disabilities, our economically disadvantaged students and our English learners. And again, I'll just go through and quickly show you the slides for each of those groups so you can see how their performance compares to that group across the state as well as comparison for, for the last several years. So that's the performance for our Asian students, our black students, our multiple race students, our, our Hispanic students, our white students, our students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged and English learners. All right, so again, our schools, we've been using this data to determine goals, action plans, specific strategies that we've been working with to improve the, improve the performance of all of our groups. Dr. Mitchell is going to share some information with you about some of the performance at the elementary level and some of the specific things that we're doing to address our learning needs. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mitchell.
Good evening. So for our elementary students, we can see consistently across the board, we have maintained being above 70%. We can see for this last school year, for the 24-25 school year, for our SOL pass rate for English, we were at 75.4%. So out of our 10 elementary schools, we have seven schools that achieved above 70%. Six of those schools achieved higher than the state average. Four of alum, four of our elementary schools improved their overall English pass rate. Four schools exceeded above 80%, and eight schools did improve with the subgroup students with disabilities.
For math?
So again, we are above 70% for math for our elementary students. For last school year, we were at 76.96% for the SOL pass rate. Out of our 10 elementary schools, again, we had seven schools that were above 70%. We had six schools that were higher than the state average. Four of our schools improved overall in math. Four schools scored above 80%, and two of our elementary schools exceeded above 90% in math. Five of our elementary schools did improve their students with disabilities for that subgroup. So overall, we've met with all the elementary schools and some of the strategies that the principals presented when they did their school improvement plan. They plan on to continue to, with our small group instruction for math and English and language arts. We have worked more with our special education team, and we are making sure that we are providing rigorous instruction for all of our students. We have implemented some high-quality instructional materials for our students. And for our elementary schools, we have strengthened our foundational literacy skills. So some of those literacy skills that our students were lacking, we have made sure that we have strengthened that instruction and intervention time. For math, we're working to increase our hands-on and our visual learning so our students will understand math. And for our students with disability, we are definitely improving on our co-teaching practices, and we're working on our specially-designed instruction. We want to make sure our students who have disabilities, they have those strategies and skills so they can have access to our, to the curriculum. And for math, all of our elementary schools, they're continuing to work on professional learning communities where our teachers meet together, we look at data, and we make decisions and make sure those decisions are in line with our curriculum. I think Dr. Comer is going to come next with some secondary data. Thank you.
As we look at our students in middle school, for all students in the area of ELA, our scores have remained stable with a slight increase, but consistently for all of our students exceeding that 70%. When we break it down into our groups, we do see the passage rate with our students with disabilities, while they are well below where we want them to be. We did see a marked increase in the area of ELA this year from the 27 to 34. So that is looking like we're moving in the right direction. In middle school math, once again, our all students, we, in 23-24, we were right under that 70% mark, and now in 24-25, moved right across that 70%. The middle school math rates for students with disabilities, once again, we saw a slight increase with that one, but moving and trending in the right direction. For our middle schools, we certainly need to strengthen that specially-designed instruction for those students with disabilities. And one of the ways we're doing that is a bigger collaboration between the curriculum department and our special education department. We're doing that through a variety of ways. Sometimes the upstairs part of the building wasn't talking to the downstairs part of the building enough, so we've tried to work really hard on collaborating with them and doing things together. We are implementing high-quality instructional materials in two areas, in math and in ELA, with two brand-new adoptions this year, with textbook adoptions. So that has been certainly something that our teachers are working on. We are also working to strengthen our co-teaching and our evidence-based interventions. When our principals wrote their in-school improvement plans, we had them research evidence-based interventions that we know work. And when they identified through their needs assessment, some of their areas based on their data that they saw concerned, they found evidence-based interventions. As we walk buildings and as principals are in classrooms, we're asking them to go into those classrooms, identify the evidence-based interventions they've put into place, and then they're constantly talking about those in their building, bringing them back to the forefront and getting training on those as needed. Once again, we know from our elementary data, when seven out of our 10 schools are making such progress, something's working there. And we know that for some time, elementary schools have used flexible small grouping. They've used those interventions in a way in which we know that that works. So we are expanding into the middle school, working more towards expanding what small-group instruction looks like, even at the middle school level, and once again, using that PLC time. In the high school language arts, we are seeing a slight decrease, but at 85 and 86%. That is well above the state average of 74. With our students with disabilities in ELA on the high school level, we saw a dramatic increase there of about 14%, which was fantastic to see. Once again, trending in the right direction. Many of our schools are high schools, and when they came forward to talk about their plans and with their needs assessment, we identified some very common themes across the division. And we see vocabulary, writing was huge, as Dr. Widener showed, that, the writing scores, while they don't necessarily count as part of our accountability, we know that's a very important skill, and then comprehension strategies. All of these are crucial for our students with disabilities. We'll continue working within the area of ELA with PLCs and looking at assessment data and responsive instruction based on student needs. And that can look a lot of different ways. That can even look at student work samples, maybe writings that students are doing and bringing those in and looking at those. And once again, the collaboration is key with our folks in the special ed department. In high school math, we are seeing an increase. We're well above that state average for 73%. And in students with disability, we saw an increase there. So that was very pleasant to see. In focusing on the mathematics pieces, we're going to be working with our mathematics coaches and leveraging their support going into the classroom and helping that, using our common unit assessments to inform our instruction, and once again, using that small-group time, especially for our students with disabilities, and utilizing manipulatives that they may use to assist them.
Dr. Widener will now talk about the performance and support framework.
So as I was saying, the school performance and support framework was a new system that was introduced last year that, again, seeks to align the former state accreditation process with the federal accountability. And again, it, it, it looks at a variety of components to kind of determine the outcomes. And at this point, we don't have those reports available yet. The state is still finalizing their calculations. But it is based on a number of different components. So it looks at, at all three levels. It looks at mastery. It also looks at growth. It looks at components that they call readiness, which would include things like chronic absenteeism. And then for the high school levels, it also looks at graduation. So based on those calculations, student, schools will be designated as fully accredited, conditionally accredited, or accreditation could be denied. But then they are also, will fall into school performance categories, either being distinguished, on track, off track, or in need of intensive support. So we have some idea where we think our schools will fall, but again, that, that's just based on our own calculations, and that's, that's not official information. So once we receive those final reports from the state, you know, we'll, we'll be reporting out on, on where, where our schools fell on, on that framework. Again, that's just kind of the breakdown of that framework, what it looks at. So again, it brings together accountability and accreditation, but it does kind of separate them out, using those specific components within the framework to identify the performance categories. And then on the fed, on, on the accountability side, those federal indicators that we have to look at, which are those achievement gaps, that will play a role in the final designation that schools are given. As I said, the framework takes into account a number of different components, so it's not just based on SOL performance. And at each level, you can see that that framework differs a little in terms of how it's counted. So mastery at the elementary level actually counts for slightly more than it does at the middle school and the high school level. Readiness, there are more factors that we look at, at the high school level. We have that three E framework that looks at a variety of things, so I, I think that may work to the advantage of our high schools. So again, that's just kind of a breakdown of those different components. So it's, it's not just based on academic performance. There are other things that, that are being factored into this complex, this complex calculation. And then just specifically, I wanted to show you, this kind of delineates some of the differences that they're looking at at each level. So again, mastery counts the most at the elementary level, and again, that's where we're looking at our, our SOL scores, so that, those raw pass rates that I shared with you in reading, math, and science, that's going to factor in here, but also looking at proficiency for our L learners. Growth, growth is calculated. They use a system called VIVAS, which looks at student growth compared to how they performed in prior years, but then also compares it across all groups across the state. And then chronic absenteeism is factored in 10% for elementary. If we move on to middle school, again, similar in terms of what they're looking at for mastery, but then they're, they're also looking at growth in math and reading, chronic absenteeism. And then at middle school, we do get some points because it's all based on a point system, so for advanced coursework. And then high school gets more complex because it's, it goes way beyond mastery. Mastery counts the least in, in our high school framework. Also looking at a variety of things for readiness, that includes the graduation rate, but also that three E readiness framework, in which high schools can earn points for enrollment in AP and DE courses, we can earn points there. Also in employment, so for students who are in a CTE completer sequence, that's another place that we can earn points. And then the third E is enlistment. So if we have students who are taking the ASVAB and earn a certain score on that, that, that's an area where we can earn points. So again, that three E readiness framework, I think, may help, help the scores for our high schools. And then, of course, the graduation rate is also calculated in that framework. So again, this framework will identify schools. Each school will fall into one of these categories. But again, I, I don't have those, those official results to share with you at this time for our schools. I'm anticipating, I'm hoping that we will receive them sometime before the end of the semester, at which point, usually they're released to school divisions to review, and then usually published for public about a week later. So what questions can we answer for you, based on this information and this data?
Thank you all for pulling all this together for us. This is a lot of, a lot of data, a lot of recommendations, really helpful for us to see that. School board members, who has questions? Who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Sure.
So I just had, had a question about absenteeism and the growth from elementary to middle to high school. Is there a particular, why, why is there more chronic absenteeism as the kids get older? Do we have any idea?
I would speculate that probably discipline, we have more, tend to have more suspensions at the secondary, so that, that may, that may impact it.
So that is... Can we, is it possible maybe to verify that that, that's discipline-related? And would, uh, would the proposed adjustments to Montgomery Central, where students go to Montgomery Central for longer-term suspensions, help with that chronic absenteeism if that is the case?
That could possibly help with it.
Thank you. And then my other question, so we're, we're close-ish to state averages on a lot of things, well, a little bit above, but as you pointed out, writing is, is quite a bit lower than the state averages. Is there a hypothesis as to why that is?
There's, there's a number. Years ago, we used to do a writing SOL assessment in fifth grade. So that, 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 that's no longer part of the SOL testing. We, we test writing in eighth grade and in 11th grade. So there are some people that speculate that that may, that may have impacted scores. I think certainly our COVID years, we probably saw a decline in writing. You know, reading is often paralleled with writing. I mean, where we see proficiency in reading, you know, that, that will support writing. So I, I think in some ways, you know, we're, we're still recovering from some of the learning loss from that time period.
So I, I would agree with that kind of assessment with reading compared to writing, but reading, we don't see the, the lower than aver, or look, Montgomery County performing lower than the Virginia numbers. And in writing, we see the, that Montgomery County is performing 2023, 24, well below. We did, we did have some growth, and we, we closed that gap significantly in 24-25, but we're still 10 points below.
And I think in, in reading, we have focused a lot of our data analysis and our interventions on skills that are very specific to reading, whether that's decoding, the introduction of the science of reading, looking at and assessing phonemic awareness, you know, looking to increase vocabulary, and then eventually comprehension. So I, I think we've been really intentional and focused on those skills, but probably in the, we probably have not put as much time into those efforts related to writing. So that's where we've got some catching up to do.
Interesting. Thank you. And thank you for putting all this together. That's a lot of information.
Ms. Purcell?
Are there any suggestions from the division of how the board can help better support our kids? So what, what can we, what would you like or need us to do to help with this?
I, I think staffing is key, you know, at, at a minimum, maintaining our, our current staffing levels, and maybe in some places, you know, as, as we engage in the budget process and look at their needs. For example, we have found the addition of instructional coaches to be very valuable. We may want to look at expanding the number of instructional coaches, because we've found that that's been a great support. I think the IT DART positions that we've created out of some of our ITRTs, and again, IT DARTs, these are Instructional Technology Data Analysis Resource teachers. They have been critical in helping not just our principals, but staff in our buildings and... but staff in our buildings access, disaggregate, really look at that data so they have the time then to plan and use it to guide their instruction. So I just think it's supporting our staffing needs so that we're able to serve our students and improve our instruction and, you know, focus on using that data in a way that really moves the needle.
Thank you so much. And I know, similar to assistant principals, there are some schools that are sharing instructional coaches, so more dedicated positions for every school.
Yeah, we have, I mean, most of our... We have very few buildings. I mean, almost all of our buildings share an instructional coach. The instructional coaches are usually split across at least two buildings.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Pardon?
Dr. Widener, thank you. This was a thorough of information, but very, very good to know and to see where we're at. On the writing, I know at one time we were having a big issue with this years back. But we were incorporating writing into each class somehow. I remember my daughter was having to write a paper in math, and we were doing that because I think we were having issues with the writing. Do you know if that's something that we're still doing? Or have we gotten away from that? Would we reconsider that? I'm trying to think of a way that we can try to help with this particular aspect. I didn't know if you had any suggestions.
So I think a focus on writing across the curriculum is important. Writing sometimes often gets grouped, you know, as an ELL, ELA skill. But really, writing is a skill that should be used in all curriculums. And so really focusing our efforts to make sure that, you know, teachers are teaching that skill, utilizing it, allowing kids the opportunity to practice, and give them feedback in their classes, not just in their English language arts classes.
And I'm going to tie this in to kind of what we were talking about with the GPA because when our kids apply for scholarships, there's a lot of writing involved. And you've got to know how to write. And you've got to know how to spell. And you've got to... So, you know, that... It's important for kids who want to try to get scholarships to know how to write and express themselves and be grammatically correct and all of that good stuff. So I'm glad to see that we're... We know that this is an issue, and we're going to try to work on fixing it. So thank you for everything.
And another thing I'll mention that we're increasing and doing more of that I think will help enhance it is we've increased the use of our high-quality instructional materials with the recent adoptions we've had in reading, but also in some of our other areas. We're accessing and using more resources that can support writing, you know, whether it's through graphic organizers or different platforms that give students feedback on writing and allow them to practice. So I think our increase of high-quality instructional materials will also support that effort.
Dr. Gitchry?
On this topic, I'll try to be more brief. A couple of questions. One is, there were some goals that were set in the spring, I think it was, on performance. Are we on track to hit those goals? I remember there were some percentages that... I don't know if other people remember this, that we had set. I know that there's been a change in leadership, so maybe that just all evaporated. But if it didn't, how are we doing for the goals that we set for the division?
So within our schools, each of our schools did a very thorough data assessment over the summer. They had a template that they used where they really dove deep into the data, not just looking at SOL data, but VALS and MAPS data. And so they used that to write specific goals for their schools, measurable goals, you know, where they want to see growth. So we're currently applying those this year. And those align with division goals as well as filter down into teacher goals. So we're certainly using this data to drive goals for this school year.
Yeah. So I remember seeing last year the school-based metrics. And I was like, we should be doing that for the whole division to have things that we are collectively striving toward for improvement. So it's not just like, how are we doing in comparison to the state? But setting measurable goals, SMART goals, for the whole division and not just for the schools. That's why I asked that question. So I'm glad to see the improvements with students with disabilities. Hopefully, the additional staffing has helped with that and some of the improvements that have been made there. I also, you know, I asked about the writing because originally it wasn't in the slide presentation. You know, the theory that, you know, this is still from COVID doesn't quite make sense to me because if you look at what's happening at the state level, at the state level by 2023, there are already meeting the... What we're seeing here for 2018, 2019 is 76%. So looking at the state level, it looks like the state has returned to pre-COVID pass rates. So I would love to see more attention to our writing scores because 66... I mean, 52 was really low. But 66 is really low, still low to me. I mean, I did wonder like how much just the students who are just writing and reading on screens. I know I keep hearing about this. Whether there's been any research on handwriting versus writing on screens, if there's a difference. But I don't know if there is.
I think there is research out there about that.
Yeah. I mean, it makes sense if we're targeting it using different approaches. But I... It's already late, so I don't want to belabor that point. But thank you for all the work you did in this. I would love to see us include our targets for a division in data presentation so that we're setting measurable goals each year. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay. So for me, what I see across the board, whether it's writing, reading, math, science, history, is that if you are not Asian or if you're not white, you're not achieving in this district. Because consistently throughout the years, these scores have been unbelievably low. So when we talk about overall, we're doing this and we're doing that, it gives a false impression about what's going on in this county because we've got so many groups of students, not subgroups because we don't have any sub-students. So many groups of students in this county who are not achieving and have not been achieving for years, for decades. And we still see the same information. And I agree, COVID, you know, COVID was here and then it left. And we just can't keep blaming everything on, well, we're still catching up from COVID. So some things have to change in our attitude toward our students as far as I see things. Because it, for me, the information is very clear. If you don't fit this, then we don't know what to do with you. Yes, there have been improvements. But when you're going from improvements from 40 or 30 to 50, that's still 50% of these students who are not achieving. 30% of these students who are not achieving, even at the highest level, for our white students. So it's just frustrating to me that we, you know, we're doing so much better when we look at the data overall. And we have got to stop every time we look at data. We need to look at data for every group of students and not just the overall because that gives folks a false sense of, okay, we're doing okay. We're not. We are not. Building those relationships, folks being culturally competent, whether that's around poverty or whether that's around race or mental illness, social, economic, you know, that really players out at me in this community. And we have heard that at different points about how people feel about that. If you don't have it, then we don't think you're going to ever get it. So these kinds of things need to be looked at, and they need to be addressed. They need to be truly analyzed. And how we do that is we go into our classrooms and we look at what's going on in the classrooms to see what is happening with our students in the classrooms. We don't have huge numbers of students who are not Asian or not white. So it shouldn't be that difficult. But unfortunately, throughout the years, it just has been mind-boggling to folks to figure out, what do we do? Is absentee part of that? Well, yeah, if we keep sending kids out of school and we don't have any resources for them to get their education while they're out of school, that definitely affects what's going on with our scores. We've got to take a deeper look. And it's not just that what books we're using, what devices we're using, which I agree the writing is an issue, right? But how we're actually embracing all of our students because it is not coming across in our data, whether it's academically or discipline. It is not coming across the way it should come across. And until we, as a district, say we're going to actually look at that and not just, well, overall, we're doing pretty good, we're going to stay the same. And our students are going to be leaving our district not prepared to do the things and be... That they can and are capable of doing. And that's not fair.
And I would just confirm, we do have significant achievement gaps when we look at specific student groups. And, you know, that is a focus of the work and conversations and planning that is going on across our school division. We have, I feel like we have greatly expanded... Well, first of all, we've provided our staff with more planning time. So I think having that preserved 80 and 85 minutes of planning time for our teachers have created more opportunities for PLC meetings. So in our buildings now, those professional learning communities are meeting bimonthly. And they're looking at that data and using that data to identify all students who need that additional intervention and support and remediation. And then they have that time to plan for it. And we've, you know, we've been using this IE time. But I think now that we are more dedicated to spending time looking at that data, discussing that data, problem-solving around that data, my hope is that that will help ensure that we're making more progress now in closing these achievement gaps.
Might add that we just started what's called a district student achievement team, which will be more central office level to look at district data and narrow down by school, by class, by subject, what it is that we might want to focus on as a district. So I think that will also add to this. Used it years ago, and we saw gains from it. We didn't correct a lot of things, but we certainly saw gains. So that's another piece of what we're thinking of and how we're going to move forward.
So can I ask, what part does our diversity and equity department play into all this?
Be a part of that team, definitely.
And I'll also just say this now, as we're in budget, we don't have enough people in that department to do the work that needs to be done and to hold things of people accountable. And what we're doing, holding that accountable, not just the people, to make sure we are doing everything we can to bring all of our students who are not achieving at a level that they should be achieving at for decades, to a point where there is a real change. We're getting above 50 and 60%, maybe. So we need more people. When we talk about people, that's one of the areas where we need more people because there needs to be more eyes and more hands in every aspect of what's going on in Montgomery County around equity. And again, that's not just about race. When you look at the groups of students who are not achieving, it's not just about race.
Board, we're at 11 o'clock. We need to take our extension vote. We still have one item on the agenda that we haven't gotten to yet. Probably a robust conversation there as well. But then our typical close-out topics there. So can I get a motion for extension?
I move to extend to finish the items on the agenda.
Second? I thought we switched it to 11.
Yeah, we don't have an 11:30 anymore. We just moved it up to 11?
If I can read it to you, it says, "When a school board meeting is still in session at 11:00 p.m., the school board shall take a vote on whether to continue the meeting. If the school board votes to continue, the meeting will adjourn no later than 11:30 p.m., unless a vote is taken to continue at that time."
Oh, okay.
It makes no sense to me now.
Okay. So we have a...
I guess I can't make that motion. I motioned to extend until 11:30, and then hopefully at 11:30, get it so we finish our meeting.
Got it. And the seconds still apply?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin? Dr. Gitchry?
No.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Three in favor, three opposed, and one abstaining.
Motion fails. So I need a motion.
I make a motion that we table this last item due to the fact that it could be a robust conversation. And I think that it needs to be discussed when people are more attuned and fresh-minded. I think it deserves that.
Any second?
A second.
Come. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
So there's discussion.
Oh, okay. You want discussion around a motion to extend?
Yes.
Which is going to extend us even longer. Cool. All right.
Do you want to go first, or you want me to?
So Mr. Stanley has sat here all night long waiting for his chance to hear us talk. So I don't think it's fair for him not to have his chance. And again, I voted no for the 11 o'clock thing because it makes no sense. Either we're going to stay here till we finish the stuff or we're not. And 11:30 is where we're always at. Now we just take time for two votes.
Yeah, and I agree that this isn't a... Maybe it's going to be a lively discussion. First, Mr. Stanley, thank you for saying, and I want to get this done so that your time was not not illwisely used waiting for us. But also, I want to get... I personally want to get this moving as quickly as possible so that we're not having kids sitting out of school contributing to our chronic absenteeism, which is contributing to our lower rates of passing as soon as possible. And that means doing it tonight, not putting it off.
Point of order. We voted on extending the meeting past 11 o'clock. So I don't think that there needs to actually be a vote on tabling this discussion until the next meeting because technically, if we don't extend the meeting past 11 o'clock, the meeting needs to end, correct?
There was a motion on the table.
Right, but that motion should not have been made because the meeting needs to end at 11 o'clock because we just voted to not extend the meeting. So the meeting needs to come to an end.
It was made by the approving group. It, it was made by the approving group from the previous vote. They can always change, or they can always make an amendment to adjust the, the previous vote.
But it, there's, what's. The meeting is supposed to come to an end if we don't, if, if it fails to be, if the meeting is not extended. This is a point of order.
Chair Denon dismisses us and there's a motion on the table.
These votes are a little bit awkward to begin with, right? I mean, you can't just stop a meeting as is. We have to do the things we have to do, but we have to figure out, have to figure out how we're going to end the meeting. We don't just drop a meeting and say, see ya.
So the, what the, our bylaws say that we can't stop in the middle of a conversation of an item. So there is some procedure there. We're not, we haven't started a new item. So if we had started, then we would have to extend, but we've not started it.
We haven't ended the current item that Amanda was presenting on. Eleven o'clock came and Linwood called for the vote. So we are in the middle of an item.
We are.
Okay, I'm, I don't know if I'm going to do this correctly.
There's no vote with Amanda's presentation. There's no motion on the table for Amanda's presentation. Well, okay, then that would be the only, that would only be acceptable is for, for us to finish the conversation from Dr. Widener's presentation. That's it.
Oh, good. We're going to spend the next half an hour figuring out how to vote.
I will recede my motion. My mind was going to blank. And I do respect the fact that you have sat here and I appreciate that. So with that, I will vote yes and change it because of that only. But I think it's ridiculous, not the fact that we're voting at eleven o'clock. I think it's ridiculous that our meetings go past eleven o'clock for everybody, the staff and anybody who might be interested, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second already.
Yeah, we have a change of a previous vote that concluded.
Yeah, where, who made those motions, Tosh? I can't see them.
I did.
Okay. So we rescinded a motion. So we need a new motion.
Recede, she receded her motion and then changed her previous vote.
But, but we voted, folks.
Another motion. I will, and I will vote yes due to the fact.
So a point of order for our parliamentarian. If there's been a motion and we voted on the motion, we can't put forward the same motion again, if I'm correct.
The part, the party that succeeded in the motion, in the motion, which is the three of you, can put forth another motion on the same motion. The ones that failed cannot.
A parliamentarian, is that correct?
I believe that that is correct.
Okay.
So one of the three of you has to make the motion. So if Jamie wants to change her vote, she has to make the motion unless one of the other two are going to make it.
Jamie, Jamie.
I make a motion that we extend the meeting to cover the last issue.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitcher?
No, respectfully.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. I don't remember what the heck I was going to ask fifteen minutes ago. Yeah, now let's go ahead and move on to the ten day suspension thing so we can hear from all the folks who are here to present on that.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Graham. We are pleased to share with you tonight a proposal for an alternative to suspensions. History regarding around, history around this proposal tonight is that based in some conversations regarding student disciplinary actions between administration and the board, several members of the board have shared that they would like to see something as an alternative similar to the program we had in the past known as the Phoenix Program. Administration, leadership team, principals have all been working on this proposal over the last several weeks. We have three presenters tonight, but a much bigger team behind it. Our hope is that we are able to bring forward the best aspects of the old Phoenix Program while also eliminating some of the downfalls of the previous program. We did go ahead and lay out kind of a mission statement and a vision. Again, this is a proposal brought forward to the board based upon your request. So certainly none of this is in stone. I will not read all of these words to you, but certainly on the left side for the mission, what we're looking to do is number one, for our secondary students, grade six and twelve, six through twelve, is to ensure that academic continuity. As we've already discussed on several other topics tonight, it's hard to be successful in school when you're not in school due to suspension. We also want to focus on utilizing social emotional learning, therapeutic supports, and restorative practices while that student is spending time away from their typical school program. Moving over to the right side, our, our goal is to hope to reduce the frequency of repeated suspensions. We want to strengthen that student voice, foster pathways for students to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Again, tying into some other conversations, these aren't just school skills, these are life skills when you have to work and function in large, complex organizations like schools. A key figure in this discussion in our proposal is our principal of alternative programs, Dr. Mike Stanley, and he'll be our next speaker.
Thank you. I think that some of the, it's good to get a little bit of historical perspective on this. One of the problems with the Phoenix Center, as we called it previously, was that students would come over for short-term suspensions and then they wouldn't have work or there were discipline problems when they came over. And so we've kind of come up with some ideas and thoughts. One of the things that I would be doing is contacting the parent or guardian of the suspended student. The, I would be in con, it would be in conjunction with the school. I would work with them to get work. We would have a dedicated teacher there to, to work with them. And there would be a little bit of lag time between the, the suspensions so that we didn't have some of the problems that we had before, which was work wasn't, there wasn't work for the student or there wasn't enough work, so I'd be working with them. Also questions that parents would have. So I would be reaching out to the parents to make sure that they understood the program. We also worked with the principals and kind of talked about some ways to reduce the suspension based on student attendance in the program as well as good behavior and, and completing all their work. And all of the secondary principals were on board with that. And so I thought that was, you know, a restorative practice that we had not, that's something we thought outside the box and really tried to look at how we could accomplish many different goals with this new concept, kind of building on an older concept that we had used previously. This is kind of a, you can see that, and it looks a little convoluted and there's many different pieces to it. Students are of course not required to come to the Phoenix Center, if, if that's what we decide to call it. We threw around lots of different names. But it is an opportunity and that, that, the hope is to present that as an opportunity for students to reduce their suspensions based on, based on the behavior and their work ethic and then add some of those restorative practices that Mr. Garrison talked about already. And so that you see kind of, there's a chart and how that would look. Again, I won't read that to you, but if you do have specific questions, especially as we get to the end, I'd be glad to, to talk about the ideas we threw out there.
I'll be talking a little bit about the academic piece because I think that is one of the main concerns when a student is suspended for ten days out of school, is what are we doing academically for that student to ensure they're still getting their education? So we have some key roles in addition to Mr. Stanley's role at the facility. The administrator from the homeschool, the teacher from the homeschool. Most importantly is the student. And then that alternate placement, the academic liaison, teacher, whatever title we call that person. So this principal from the homeschool, we have a major infraction, a ten-day suspension. They initiate that. They're going to make that phone call to Mr. Stanley. And their job is to ensure the timely delivery of all the materials, making sure that they notify all the teachers involved, making sure they collect those assignments. We do want to give teachers at least a twenty-four hour time period to get those materials together, to provide adequate timing for that. We do want to make sure those are compiled and delivered by the first day. So the first three days of the suspension are served out of school. So we could potentially, looking at this program, go from a ten-day of missing instruction down to only three, so that would potentially save us some days there. So on day four, they would report to Montgomery Central. And by then, the work should be there for that student. The program-based academic liaison, teacher, they would of course, you know, work with making sure they have the materials provided by that homeschool. They would provide instructional support. While we know students do spend a lot of time on Chromebooks and technology, that is one way that we can help deliver that information. But they have to have that in-person teacher that's going to provide support and then make sure that student is completing work and that they're engaged. That communication piece, once again, is so important that that academic liaison slash teacher is working with that homeschool administrator and about that student progress. Because you'll see, the student progress is what we're really, that, that, that's going to be the key piece. So the teacher back at the school, they provide all the work. There will be grading of that work upon return unless otherwise arranged. It may be that the teacher there can grade that, it may be something that needs to be sent back. But key is the student. That's going to be our big point. Is that student engaged while they're there in that alternative placement? That's crucial that they participate, that they complete the work. If you saw back in one of the, the slide that had the flowchart, student does not participate in the program or is disruptive, they have to serve the remaining ten at home. But if that student successfully completes and participates in this forgiveness program, they can return back to school on day seven. So day seven, eight, nine, and ten, right there are days. And the three days that they're at Montgomery Central, we can count those students present. So for the chronic absenteeism, plus they're getting support on all of those days. So the student piece of that, of course, we want that student to buy into this program. But we've got to get to the root causes. What is happening? Why is that student getting ten days of suspension? That's what we've got to look at. And that's where our therapeutic supports come in. And this is crucial. We know many of our students thrive in a smaller setting with fewer students. We know that Mr. Garrison has looked at some data and we have less than, what, twenty-five students that have had a ten-day suspension? So we're not looking at huge numbers there. So it would definitely be a small setting. That, the day should provide some time for that student to do some reflective work, reflect on their behaviors and then work in those other areas where we can get some restorative practices into place. Looking at some behavioral interventions we can start on. We'll be utilizing our division adopted social emotional learning curriculum that we have and they can utilize that while on-site from that facility. We will also continue to look at wraparound services through many of our agencies that we already have in place within the division. And Dr. Brown will talk to us about some other areas, including HR and some logistics of transportation and facilities.
In terms of positions for the alternative program, we would need to hire two, a teacher and a behavior specialist. HR would work to advertise that, screen the applicants, make sure we got the, the best candidates possible. And as we can see there, the total cost for those two positions would be around one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and twelve cents. In terms of a space for the program, we have identified an exist, existing area in the cafeteria. We would actually utilize that and build a classroom for up to eighteen students there. It would take approximately forty-five to sixty days to construct and it would be around thirty-eight thousand dollars. I know that does seem like a lot of money, but it is actually on average for what construction costs are right now. So you can read through what we would have in that area. But it would take two to three weeks to actually just get the drawings done and another, another sixty days to get it constructed. As far as transportation goes, the students would ride their, their bus to their home schools. And we're currently running shuttles back and forth from schools to, to Montgomery Central. So the transportation would, would still be on par with what we're doing right now. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Garrison to wrap it up.
I believe that's the end of our presentation. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you all for putting that together and presenting tonight. School board, who has questions?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you. Been asking for a solution to what's been happening for over two years now. Well, maybe not two years, since the last time you presented. And that's when I realized students were not being served. So I like it. I appreciate it. And I can't wait for our students to be able to get back into their home schools sooner and for them to have an opportunity to continue their education while they also understand, you got to do better.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, this is great. Many items that were innovative that I hadn't think about with an alternative program. Y'all did a great job. Does this, this would not include any students who are recommended for expulsion, correct?
That was our proposal.
Okay.
Of course, this is all subject to the board's input and approval. Our thought was if they were, were to be coming to the board for a hearing, it probably would not make sense to have them in, then potentially before the board and then potentially being put out long term.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to verify that that was the case. And then with the lead time of forty-five to sixty days, with some of those being. lead time of 45 to 60 days, with some of those being ordering materials and whatnot, I would like to make a motion at the end. I'd like to recommend that we go forward with this now, because we don't have another meeting until December, and then that's half, half of the time that it takes to implement this, if we have the budget to, to do it in the, the current budget.
Ms. Purcell?
I don't think I have any, any questions. It's really a thoughtful plan that addresses serious problems. So, just thank you all for the hard work that you did to put it together. Yeah, I'm similar to Dr. Roundtree. Just what are, what are some reasonable timelines to, to get it, to get it launched, so that we can get things started?
Ms. Bond?
I don't have any questions, but I'm not willing to make a decision tonight.
Ms. Pardon?
So, thank you, everyone who put this PowerPoint together. It's a lot of good information. I still need to do some research on this, and I would like to hear from our community and get some other feedback on this. So, I will not be taking a vote on this this evening.
Dr. Getchey?
Thank you for all your work putting this together. I, I concur with some of my fellow Board members here. I think this is too important a decision to be making at 11:30. I have questions, but it's a, it's a late hour. I think, I'm sure you understand. It's late for you as well. But thank you.
I guess the one question, the second, the first question I had, actually, Dr. Roundtree answered, and I saw it in the presentation about the students awaiting a hearing, right? Because then we, we could get into buying, returning them to school before the Board's even had a chance to hear them. So, that, that, that took care of itself. I guess, I guess my one concern with this is, you know, from, from sixth grade to senior year, you're going to have a wide range of students with a wide range of academic needs and capabilities, right? Like, you know, like, I know from experience, an AP student who ended up in OSS, right? Like, so, the expectation to have one teacher able to help shepherd that whole spectrum of classes, it just feels unachievable, unachievable to me. I mean, can you speak to kind of what the, like, what the expectations would be of that teacher?
I mean, I will try, and certainly the rest of the group. I mean, I guess in my mind, to your point, Mr. Hudson, sixth-grade needs versus the needs of a senior, and, and again, across all levels of ability. From an instructional standpoint, I don't think we would be leading anyone to believe this is our, our, our A-level instruction, right? It, it really is probably in my mind for hiring, we're looking for a teacher more equipped in the soft skills and the restorative pieces than the academic components. They would work with the students that they have to the best of their ability, and maybe would even have to lean on some other folks in the building, or some folks at the homeschool for some really technical information. But again, to the Board's point in proposing it, rather than the student sitting at home with nothing, you know, any, any, any opportunity for a trained teacher to provide support, have a place for the student to be, meals for the student, parent maybe doesn't have that concern with, with, with work, I think we acknowledge that it's not going to be top-tier instruction, but it is an improvement from the current situation. The other piece I will just mention, changing gears a little bit, when we talk about timelines and construction, hiring staff is going to become equally important, and maybe just as, as challenging when we look at any kind of timeline.
Roger. Agreed. Thank you. Board's 11:30. Hey.
So, I think we said until this agenda item was done. I think that was the motion, right?
No, it was...
It's 11:30, so we got a vote?
Again, that whole thing was ridiculous.
I, I move to continue the meeting until we finish with the items on the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, because weren't we not supposed to end in the middle of a discussion?
Correct. Any discussion?
Because I still had a couple of comments. Are we still going, right? So, in this, in the aspect... Okay.
Sorry, Ms. Franklin.
I don't know what we're doing.
Yeah, right. Ms. Osborn, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchey?
There was no, we didn't finish discussion on it. I'm, I'm a no.
The motion is to extend until we finish the agenda that you're voting for.
Right, but there's supposed to be a discussion before you vote.
I looked around for discussion. I didn't see any.
He asked for discussion. Go ahead and discuss.
Well, I was going to ask if I'm, I'm required to stay past 11:30. I have to get up before the, before the sun comes up, like, well before the sun comes up, and I don't want to feel like I'm hungover all tomorrow. So, I'm a no.
Yeah, I don't think school board members are required to stay as long as we maintain a quorum.
That's right.
If you got to go, go.
There are board members who have had to leave before meetings were over, and some did it very, very dramatically in the past. So, you're not the only one who's had to, thank goodness, I don't have to worry about that anymore. But you're not the only one who's had to do that for years.
We're here to do the business of the county, and it doesn't always end at 11:30, unfortunately. It'd be easy if it did, but it doesn't. Any more discussion?
Just, can we move away from this slide, because the animation is...
I'm going to need a separate motion for that. Ms. Osborn, please call the roll.
I think I was on Ms. Parton.
That's a no.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes?
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Four in favor, three opposed.
Motion carries.
Okay, so now?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Stanley, in relationship, relation to the question about the range of students from sixth to 12th grade, that's the situation we have now. It may not be in a classroom, but we still have that range of students who may be at Montgomery Central, maybe not sixth grade yet. Yeah.
So, we, we don't currently have any sixth graders, and we also don't have them in the same classroom. So, these would be in the same cla... I think this is a work in progress, and I think what we're trying to do is, is what the Board's asked us to do, is look at this and then try and make this work. So, let's see how it works. And I'm not sure what that's going to look like, but I think we can, we can make adjustments as we go. And I think the key is to do the best we can to do what the Board's asked us to do.
Because this concept is not much different than what the original Phoenix program looked like. And that was to keep kids in school, and to give them some academic instruction so that they would not fall behind. And the counseling piece, in many of these cases, is very, very necessary. And they're not going to get that sitting at home.
Any more discussion?
So, I'd like to make a motion, taking into consideration my colleague's comments. Two to three weeks is the estimated time to do drawings. We wouldn't be ordering doors and frames and hardware until after that. So, I will motion for us to move forward with completing drawings for the space, and then for us to have a vote on completing everything else during our December 2nd meeting.
Any discussion?
Anything else that we've ever had come before us, we've wanted to have the information, and then we wanted to give the opportunity for the public to have, to have a voice on it. And that's one of the things that we've always been adamant about, and I don't think this is any different.
This is not to move forward with the program, it's just to get the drawings in place in, in case the Board decides to move forward with the program. That's what he asked.
Asked for the drawings, which are, have a two-to-three weekly time, is what they estimated here on Slide 9.
Any more discussion? Yeah, I guess for me, I, I would echo that. I mean, I think that this is, this is a big deal, and I think our community should have a chance to process it and weigh in. And even at the next meeting, like, like this, taking this vote in the middle of this budget cycle, we're going to have to find close to $200,000, right, for additional staff and facility costs. I mean, that's, that feels like a challenge, right? I think it's something that...
Finding the staff will probably be, be the hardest part.
Agreed. Right.
We can, we can find the money.
I would think so.
But hiring is going to be an issue, as it always is.
And scheduling the construction. I, I don't know what's on the agenda, but we have to get the people in to schedule the construction as well.
Yeah, that's one reason to go ahead and try to get the drawings and then get stuff going, is we have a break coming up when students aren't in, might be able to handle some of the wall construction during that break.
Any more discussion? Ms. Osborn, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchey?
No.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Purcell?
No.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Two in favor, five opposed.
Motion fails. So, then not, not passing that motion tonight, the, the original plan was to bring this back for an actual vote at, at the next meeting, right? So, we'll, we'll continue to do that. We're just not getting started in advance of that. So...
Thank you for that direction.
Just for, for clarity there. Okay. But again, regardless, thank you all for, for the presentation tonight, putting together all this information for us. It's a great idea. All right, Board, that brings us up to unfinished business. Do we have any items of unfinished business tonight? No? Any items of new business?
Yeah, so, addressing some of our lengthy meetings, we've had some discussions on governance of the, of the Board and how to handle discussions during events. And I, I think several times you've talked about going around and then back around the, the group, and not having a lot of jumping around unless there's a quick comment or question. We've had a lot of discussion during the meeting where it went around, it went to me, Penny, Ed, and then somebody jumped in and talked for 10 minutes, 15 minutes, and then went back to the group. So, if we can keep that flow a little bit better, that will help out with a lot of this extended meeting time. Nobody ever actually spoke for 15 minutes, five minutes. Laura, Laura would have called him on 15, because we're not allowed to extend what?
I'll say as Board Chair, I try, and it doesn't happen very often, but... Thanks. Any other items of new business? Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Going, going, gone? All right. Any announcements or information?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Sparks and Ms. Warner for hosting me over at CES and CPS a couple of weeks ago. I kind of lose track of time right now, but it was really nice to be able to tour those buildings. I'd been on the grounds, but not inside before. And there were some really wonderful examples of handwriting displayed on the, on the walls at, at CES, which are very nice to see and relevant to tonight's conversation.
Yeah, and thanks to the fourth graders at Price's Fork Elementary School. Yesterday, I went and had lunch with them, cheeseburger, tater tots, carrots, and a pear, and a bottle of milk. Good time.
Awesome. Anyone else?
I just want to congratulate BHS's track team for Winning State.
Awesome. All right, great. Upcoming school board meetings, those listed in Board Docs, our next official public meeting is December 2nd. There's a school board annual convention coming up here in, in a week or so, and some closed sessions around the superintendent search as well. All right, and with that, I adjourn this meeting at 11:42 PM. Thanks, everybody.